Just to follow on, Councilor Wolbrook is in the parking garage. She'll be here in just a few minutes, so we'll go ahead and wait for her to get in. We're also working some IT issues. Three of the council members will be attending this meeting remotely. Councilman Shada, Councilor Wolf, and Councilor Chandler elected to do this remotely, so we're getting that worked out. So we should be able to start here in just a few minutes. As Becca said, this is largely a presentation of information. So, councilors, if you have questions, please, we'll hold them. And I think what we want to do is give the questions to Judy Morgan at the end of the day, if they're written down physically, or they can be emailed to Denise and Judy this weekend, or you say by Monday. So I think everybody's got, all the council members have three-by-five cards. You've also got a small notepad, so we can collect that material.
Yep.
Again, today's purpose, we've got an awful lot. This is a, it's a pretty thick book. There's a lot of information in there. There's a lot to be understood. And this could certainly precipitate many questions. But the focus for today is to give the city staff an opportunity for them to present the information that they see that we need to know going forward for the 2021 budget. So I would like to have us withhold questions until they've had a chance to explain things, basically to hold questions until the end of the day or even a following day. So please make your questions, note your questions as we go along. But if you withhold asking them until either late today, depending on how we finish up, we're scheduled to go to four o'clock. If we finish up earlier, we've got the option to do that, or perhaps to ask questions. We don't want to keep the city department heads here all day necessarily. They're here to present for their department, and they'll be able to respond to questions later on. I will defer to Denise if she has any related follow-on questions to that or comments.
No, the only other question, or the other statement I would make is Becca and I are willing to meet with anybody one-on-one. We'll do early mornings, late nights, it doesn't matter. So if anybody would like to meet one-on-one and go through the budget in more detail, we can definitely do that. So I want to make that offer.
Great. And I believe Denise and Becca have already reserved Monday from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for one-on-one sessions with any council members who'd like to seek more data or ask questions. I will have a few opening remarks. I'd like to be sure we're ready to go, so I will wait for Councilor Wolbrook. And if we could get an indication if the other three councilors who are working, okay, so I see thumbs up, two thumbs up, so that's good. We have the other members online. Great. Well, at this point, I think, this is a, I think this is a first in Manitou's history. This is the first hybrid meeting we've ever done. So brave new world, here we are, pushing forward. I would like to remind everyone that we're trying to make an effort to make this as public and as transparent a process as possible. This is all being livestreamed on the Manitou Springs City Facebook page. I've had comments from several citizens, so I know we've got, you know, I've got a few more people than who are in this room and the three councilors who are listening remotely, people who are listening and are interested in what we're doing. I think it's appropriate to mention the Colorado Sunshine Law in this context. And so I'll read a little, just a little reminder here that we want to be mindful of today. "The Colorado Sunshine Law for Open Meetings informs of the methods by which public meetings are conducted. The law was first passed in 1972 and then modified in 1996. The law states that all meetings of two or more members of any state public body where any public business is discussed must be open to the public." And this, of course, applies to Manitou Springs City Council. "A gathering of a quorum of three or more individuals from a local body constitutes a meeting. Emailed messages discussing impending actions constitutes meetings and are subject to the law. A notable exception is private meetings where the discussion of public business is not the central topic. If violated, state courts have the jurisdiction to enforce the Colorado Sunshine Law for open meetings. If the court finds that a violation occurred, the court can award plaintiff costs and reasonable attorney fees. The opening meetings law can be referenced, it's Colorado revised statute 246401 and following." Thank you, we'll keep that in mind. Thanks to everyone who, you've come out on a beautiful Saturday morning. I think it's the first day of antelope season, and yet you're here. I want to thank the city staff for the work they've done on this budget. It's a very, I think, fine piece of, it's a fine document. It explains our future going forward from a financial perspective very well. So my thanks to Becca, to Denise, to Nicole, and to everyone, all the department heads who've participated in this. This is a good roadmap. We'd like to hear more about it today. We'll hear from each department today regarding your goals and projects and the underlying financial support that you'll require for the things you need to do going forward. We're not going to go into this line by line. This, there's an awful lot of material here. We need to get a good overview, a good useful overview of what's going to inform Manitou Springs into the coming year. If there are line-by-line questions, those can be answered one-on-one at a later time. Council's responsibility is set policy, and I think to establish a vision, not get into operations. Much of the 2021 budget is completing, or it's a continuation of capital projects that the city has already committed to. And in fact, today, I think there's, we have a fairly, I think, in a sense, a rigid budget, and then we have our basic fixed cost types expenses, the basic continuing operations of the city, plus capital improvements. We're heavily skewed towards capital improvements, which I think is great because we've neglected capital improvements for a long time. That said, okay, Susan, welcome. Thank you. I think we're, Denise? I'm sorry, okay. I think we're ready to start. In that case, I will call this meeting to order. This is a meeting in Manitou Springs City Council. It's the Budget Work Session, a day-long workshop to be held, what's today, October the 3rd, 2020, and we're holding it in Centennial Hall, courtesy of the El Paso County Commissioners. Judy, would you please call the roll?
[inaudible]
Here. Here.
[inaudible]
I can't hear you.
[inaudible] Well, I can't hear anything that anybody else is saying. Is somebody calling the roll?
Yes, yes, the roll is being called.
Is that Councilor Julie Wolf?
Oh, in that case, I, in that case, there's a problem with the audio. I can hear you, John, but did Judy do any talking?
I wasn't on microphone until now, so sorry about that.
Oh, okay. Sorry, well, I'm here.
And so, Councilor Judith Chandler, I think I heard you, but I wasn't sure.
Oh, I am here, I'm present.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like we're all in attendance, with three that are coming in through Skype.
Great, so we're all present in one fashion or another. Very good. And just as a quick reminder, if you have questions for those of us who are here at Centennial Hall, we've been, we've been given little three-by-five cards and notepads. Those are possible ways that we can collect our thoughts and note questions as we go through, through the day. Again, these, this will be basically a presentation by the department heads. We will not be entertaining questions or comments during their presentation. We want to get through this today. And if we get to the end of the day and have a little time left, we could perhaps entertain questions then. I expect the question phase is really going to be, we're going to hand off our cards and questions to Judy at the end of the day. We can also submit questions and comments via email. And for the three councilors who are remote, I guess you've got several options, probably email would be the best. But we want to get through this pretty smoothly. With that, Denise, I would like you to go ahead and take the overview, please.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Councilor Wolf, Councilor Shada, and Councilor Chandler, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you fine there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and thanks for taking this time on a Saturday morning. And I really do want to recognize Becca. She has put hours and hours on this. Alex has done a tremendous amount of hours to get the budget book together. And then, of course, all the department heads that are here, the hours and the time and the dedication that they have put towards this with a year that is unprecedented. They all deserve a great amount of credit, so I want to recognize them for what they do. I also want to recognize you for your leadership and for all that you do for this great community. So with that, I have emailed the PowerPoint to everyone so that they have it. We did it this morning, and we'll go through the PowerPoint and manage through that. The purpose of today is we are presenting a proposed budget, and it's a balanced budget. It really does look at the capital projects that we have committed to and what we need to do to finish those and the grants that moves forward. The vision has pretty much already been set by Plan Manitou. So as we look at this, we looked at Plan Manitou, and we managed accordingly. Today, we're doing the proposed budget. October 6th, the presentation, it will be at the city council meeting, and again, it will be the proposed budget. That's what will be, we need to do that. For the state deadline, we have to submit a proposed budget on October 15th. Then, October 13th through the 30th, which is right now October 16th and October 19th, we will have public meetings. We did that last year, and it was very successful, and we'll do it again this year via Zoom. November 17th will be the first reading, and December 1st will be the second reading and a budget approved. We must have an approved budget and a certification of mill levy by the state deadline of December So budgets, they're exciting, they're a roadmap, they're challenging, and they're an opportunity. I know opportunity I use a lot, but they really are an opportunity. They look at lots of different pieces. They look at our capital, they look at our assets, they look at our expenses, they look at past debt. So we look at all those things as we move forward with a budget, and it is not easy, but it is a plan. That is the important thing with a budget, it is a plan. They are, they do change. It depends on what happens and how you move forward, but it's a plan that can be nimble. Today's agenda is fairly tight. We have by department, each department will be coming up, they'll be talking about what their plan is, what it looks like, and what the changes are to the budget accordingly. Overall, it's a very flat budget. It's pretty much the same as last year. We have not added much to it. The vision, this is Plan Manitou's vision. This is what the community adopted in 2017. "We are welcoming, accessible, and vibrant small community at the foot of Pike's Peak. We preserve and protect our heritage and natural beauty, and are a renowned destination for arts, culture, recreation, lifelong learning, and wellness." This slide, fiscal responsibility. Take a moment and look at this. You know, COVID-19 hit in March. I don't think any of us realized what COVID-19 would do. And I cannot say enough about the people that are behind me, these department heads. We came back and we knew that sales tax was going to be down. We knew that a lot of things was going to happen. You gave us the opportunity to use our URA money, and when you did that, I promised you fiscal responsibility. And when you look at this, this is fiscal responsibility. If we keep the URA money, we're at a 37.85% reserves. We did not use one dime of the URA money. You decide whether you want to give it back, whether you want to give part of it back, whether you want it to be used for capital, but that will be your decision. But I made a promise to you, fiscal responsibility, and we did it. Overall, even without the URA money, we're at 1.9 reserves, which is 21.69%. I would tell you, this staff has done more than you can ever imagine this year. We have been short-staffed, we put a hiring freeze on, we cut everything that we could possibly cut, and yet, the staff did amazing. This has never been in the history of Manitou. This is because of great leadership by these department heads. You asked us to be fiscally responsible, and every one of them did. Every one of them took the task, and they led through it. This is the most challenging time that I think this city has ever seen. Thick floods were challenging, without a doubt. Everything was challenging, but we ended up with 800,000 less in revenue, and yet, we're All I can say is all these individuals deserve a lot of credit, and all the employees who worked tireless hours and who dedicated their time to this great community to make sure they got things done. I put together just some community quick facts. Our population is 5,448. It's grown by 414 since 2010. Quick population change. Age distribution, Manitou, age distribution is a little bit older than El Paso County And as we mentioned, questions, please write them down on your index cards. At the end of the presentation, if we have time, we'll take them. If not, I ask you to send them an email, and I'll be collecting index cards, and we can meet with anybody one-on-one to go over any details. Becca and I are, we will meet morning, we will meet night, we'll do whatever it takes to meet your time commitment. But I do want to, and each department is going to talk about accomplishments, but I too want to put some accomplishments out there that I think are amazing. With a COVID-19, with budget cuts, with $800,000 less in revenue, all those things, this city and this, this staff has accomplished a great deal. We successfully, successfully managed COVID-19 and reopening, avoided furloughs and layoffs, worked with the city of Coral Springs to successfully implement an incline management plan. Probably one of the most challenging things we've done, right? And it's never been done, but wow. Through lots of challenges for you and for us, it's put together, and they're still working on a long-term plan, hours and hours of time. Implemented a new work order system, see, click, fix. You think that may be easy, but it's not. To do a whole new system and put it in and get the word out takes time and energy. Try it, test it, see how it works. Contracted a public information officer who has improved the communication greatly, and I think you guys see that every week by the weekly reports. But not only does he do that, I will never forget, one morning I called him on 9/11, and I said, "Don't forget, the fire group is going to be up there, and we need to be on the incline." At 6:30, he texts me, and he says, "I'm already here." He took this budget book and put over 100 hours in it, trying to make it work and get it right. Changed email accounts to .gov, which increased security. Continuing hazard mitigation efforts with El Paso County and joined them in that. Initiated a project to small, to install hydro power at the water treatment plant. This has been in the works for years, and we're starting to move forward. URA money, we didn't use it. Fiscal responsibility. Financial policies approved. Becca, I think, has been working on that for five-plus years, and it's done, and you adopted it. Secured a loan through Colorado Water Resources. Started tracking KPIs, and they're not perfect, but we're starting to track for the first time in history, we're starting to keep track of how many potholes, what we do, what's our bad debt ratio, parking, what's the, what's the capacity, and how are they being filled? So in three years, we can look back and say, what is the, what are the trends, and what do we need to do to move forward? Decreased traffic on Ruxton. Began the sewer line replacement plan, replacement on Clark'sley. It hasn't quite began, but we got it under contract and moving forward. Secured funding for repaving a Manitou Avenue. I believe it's been 15 years since that's been repaved. Safely hosted the 2020 Pike's Peak Marathon. Transition code enforcement from planning to police. Again, not an easy endeavor that took time. Parking department in-house, saving thousands of dollars and giving us the ability to say how we move forward and where we monitor and what we can and cannot do. Again, not an easy task, but took time. We're still trying to do a few things with it, but we're almost 100% there. Maps project is out to bid. Micro mobility ordinance, imposter Facebook page that's been out there for five to 10 years that we couldn't get off, and we finally got it done. Yeah, we've made some mistakes along the way, and it's really easy to start thinking about all the things that we don't do. But I think it's, we all need to take a moment to see the things that we have done and what our staff has done and what our department heads have done. They work tirelessly to serve the residents and the great community of Manitou. Community sales tax comparison. We put this together. Manitou is at 9.03. You see the other cities here. Community mill levy. For each mill levy, it's about $70,000. So you'll see Castle Pines, their assessed values are much higher, so they have a less mill levy. Ours is at 13, fairly high. Woodland Park is at 16. Palmer Lake at 21. Again, I want to bring this up again because I, this is amazing to me, and I hope all of you take a moment to thank the leadership, the department heads, for what they've done this last year to be fiscally responsible. You asked that of us, and we did it. Sales tax limitations. We are a primary tourist destination. It is what brings in the most of our money, right? Outside sales tax, I don't know about you, but I know for me, now I order everything online so that it pays Manitou sales tax. This is the outside sales tax that keeps, continues to grow. 2018, 477,000. 2019, 801,000, and right now, we're at 544,000. Each one of these, as you go through them, if we did just real estate property tax, we'd only bring in about $750,000. Revenue sources, government grants, government shared revenues, administrative support, and it goes on and on, and overall grants for capital, $4.7 million. That saves our taxpayers a tremendous amount of money by going after those grants, partnering with others, and finding solutions to move forward. Other revenues. And Becca will be going through each of these, and I will tell you, Becca knows this budget inside and out. She, I can ask her any question, and she knows it. She understands it. So she is the go-to for a budget. She knows every single number, she knows what happens, she knows where it is. Got an email from her late last night, she found something that was like, oops, so we made a correction this morning, but she knows this budget. Capital commitments. These are commitments we've already made. We can't change these commitments. Maps, Ruxton Corridor, Creek Walk, the zoning rewrite, the historical survey. Fire training building. The Soda Springs Park Phase 1, Parks and Facilities Master Plan, and the ADA at the post Expenses by department will be going into each of the departments and what that looks like and what those expenses are, but as this shows it, police and public services are always your highest expenditures. URA, this will be presented to you in November with all the other boards and commissions. I believe it's November 11th, if I remember correctly, but this is just theirs, where their revenue approximately is, their fund balance, and their proposed budget for 2021. You'll be looking at that, at that time and approving or deciding how you want to move forward. Economic Development Council, the EDC. Again, if you have questions about this, Becca can talk about it, but this is how it goes. They're asking for 409,000, and we are recommending to go ahead and fund them at the 409,000. Overall, funding for boards and commissions, and we put this in the budget. We put what they were asking and what we recommend. Again, this will be your choice, this is your direction, but this is what we did as a, for a balanced budget. Boards and commissions continued. You will see those as you go forward, the open space, the match, the partners for healthy choices, tree planting, on and on. Opportunities are always increased parking fees, and I believe Roy's going to be bringing that to you in the near future. Charge for the shuttle. Public, public safety tax, a road improvement tax, something to start looking at. I'm making a proposal that by April, we bring something back to you and for you to look at. Charge for special events, a mill levy. Look at what we outsource. There are basically now two things that we outsource, that is our legal department and our HR department. Broadband enterprise, it was voted on, and it was passed by the city of Manitou, that we could bring broadband in-house and charge, but there's a lot of things to look at when you do that. So that is something we have to look at long-term and start those conversations, and then the With that, I just want to again recognize the staff of Manitou. They have given you and the residents everything that they could give you this year through one of the most challenging times. Understaffed, long hours, with no overtime. The department heads probably average anywhere from 50 to 60 hours a week, every single week. Trying to fit, trying to make sure, if they have to go dig holes, they do it. If they have to paint, they paint. If they have to clean, they clean. Nothing is beneath them, and they give you everything that they have. Every single staff member of Manitou is dedicated to Manitou, and I want to recognize them for an amazing year that got a ton accomplished under the most challenging times. So with that, I'll turn it over to the legislation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Denise. That was nicely done.
Morning, Judy. Hello. So, go ahead and go on to the next one. The next three departments I'm covering, they're very straightforward, so this should go pretty quickly for my part. So the Legislative Department budget is, obviously, that's for council, council costs. It's set to increase by 18,000 from the 2020 budget, and this basically is reflecting the legal service costs. Budgets were cut in late spring, and those cuts that we, we took out of the legislative were reducing the training and travel line items. For the 2020 final budget adjustments, 20,000 was added for legal services to cover increased need for these services due to COVID-related issues such as incline closure and reopening. The three largest budget items for the Legislative Department are the stipend that the mayor and council receive, which is very minimal, we all know, the casualty insurance and legal So training and development reflects previous costs for standard council training opportunities with the expectation, we put it back up to what we, that in 2021, it will allow for renewed interest in and availability to the league conference and other in-person training statewide. The civic clerk software, which is what we are now using for our agendas, is up and running and replaces the previous agenda management software, and the software cost has been reclassified to the Legislative Department. Now, we're going to go ahead and move into the city clerk. Paige here. So the city clerk's budget reflects a conservative approach to the budget with $40,000 in cuts that were applied to many areas. These include staffing. We went from three full-time employees to two and a half. The reductions in training, travel, and professional services were also what we decided to cut. Additions to the 2021 budget include a regular candidate election, which is about $5,000 -- Additions to the 2021 budget include a regular candidate election, which is about $5,000 cost, and records management software. So those were the two that really got added in for this next year. And that records management software is for our social media platforms, and that will bring us compliant, and that's about $5,000 for the year as well. Okay, so some of the City Clerk accomplishments. Yesterday, we went live with our Civic Clerk. So what used to show up on our agenda page was from our NOVUS program, and now it's our Civic Clerk program. We've been working on training with staff, and we're close to completion on that. Council will be looking into, will be asking you to schedule some training with us so that we can get you trained on our new Civic Clerk. It's very intuitive, so it shouldn't take very long. And then also, the other thing that we're hoping, or we're not hoping, that we plan to do is our boards and commissions will also be using this program, which will be a huge benefit for them as well. And we'll be getting them trained next after council gets up and running. With the COVID pandemic, it's provided us an opportunity to partner with state and local agencies and groups to assist with economic recovery for our local liquor licensees. So we've been working on some programs to try to get them so they can do more business outdoors. As council all knows, we've had to learn to fly, learn on the fly and roll with the punches when it came to learning how to effectively conduct remote meetings for council boards and commissions, and something we continue to figure out as we move forward towards hybrid meetings in the very near future. Our biggest cut and adjustment for this department has been the impact from the vacant position of Court Clerk Administrative Assistant to the Clerk. With this position remaining vacant throughout the year, we've managed to stay very lean, and with the extra workload being managed by existing staff. Also, COVID-19 increased our workload with all of the extras that this brought to the table, all the while keeping overtime down low to no overtime. And next year, the one full-time employee, which is the Court Clerk Administrative Assistant to the Clerk, which was an 80/20 share, is now going to be shared with the court and the Planning Department as a 50/50 share. So that is cutting hours for the Court Clerk. So some of the highlights. Once again, the $5,000 for the candidate election for next November. We eliminated $20,000 that I had initially proposed in case we had a special election in the spring. We have a $5,000 records management software for cities' social media platforms. We have training, travel, and mileage reduced by half. And we've reduced staffing. The deputy city clerk has been absorbing that 20% administrative position into her position. And she's also been covering the city, the Court Clerk position. So our goals for 2021, it's an election year, and that will be for wards 1 through 3 and the mayor's seat. And this process should start pretty early in the year and will involve many months of efforts. So a deficiency identified when I came onboard was our records management for social media platforms. And so there again, we're looking into getting that software to take care of that and bring us up so we're compliant with state mandates. The SOPs have been ongoing. We have been working on those as we can throughout the year. It's been challenging with down a whole staff member. But we do plan to dedicate more time once we get that extra staff, 50% staff person onboard. Okay, and moving on to the Judicial Department. This department is a pretty static budget with only significant change being to the Court Clerk staffing. So the plea-by-mail program was developed during the early months of the COVID pandemic lockdown as a way to manage and reduce in-person interaction, and it's worked very well. Early in 2020, our deputy city clerk worked through the process for services to supervise the municipal courts, court-appointed council, and so that was a big accomplishment. Other municipalities have heard about and requested our standard of procedures, which our deputy city clerk created early in 2020. And cost savings were managed by not hiring the vacant Court Clerk admin to the City Clerk position for this entire year. The Court Clerk responsibilities were absorbed into the City Clerk Department, and workload adjustments were made where possible with a willingness to be flexible with the ever-changing dynamics that 2020 has brought. So once our 50% Court Clerk position is hired, the goals are established to bring the Judicial Department into a more current online process to make our services more robust. Steps are already being started towards these goals. Almost done. So the judicial budget is a tight budget with every line item being necessary to run municipal court. Reductions were made to membership dues and 30% staffing cuts for that Court Clerk position, which brought it from a 32-hour-a-week job down to 20-hour-per-week. So we'll have to manage that. The only increase is the addition of the police officer overtime for bailiff services, and that is for the one day per month, the court day. Previously, this overtime pay was coming from the police department, but it seemed reasonable to put it into the court since it is for their court day. So that concludes my three departments.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll talk a little bit about the Executive Department. Again, a fairly flat budget except for the addition of, and we'll talk about what this is and how this grew and why it grew. So we'll go through and talk about that. But the mid-year budget, you'll see $796, final budget $810, proposed budget for next year is $876. So as we go through this, we talk a little bit about the accomplishments, and it's, I think, continuing to establish trust and leadership between our residents, the city, our businesses, while maintaining government continuity. And I will say, this year, when we got the CARES Act and we gave $200,000 to the businesses, they were much appreciative, right? It kept some of them in business, which is important as we continue to go through this. That's employment. That's tax revenue. That's a partnership that we continue to want to build and establish. Managed through COVID-19, probably one of the most challenging times. Closed one day and had to figure out what does that look like and how do we keep operations going? How do we get staff back in successfully? How do we meet the needs of the residents? And this other one, we have built trust through enhanced timely and efficient communications. Our PIO officer has made great strides in our Facebook posting and other things and responding as quickly as possible. Our goals moving forward is to stay financially sound and stable, continue to improve communications and while balancing the needs of residents, businesses, and visitors. Also, we want to, last year, we were planning to do a customer service satisfaction survey, and then COVID-19 hit. The Air Force Academy closed everything, and we were working with a group there to do this. So we're trying to get that done and have it completed by July 31st this year. The goals were 75% of the survey scoring satisfied or above satisfied. Continue to foster staff development and create an environment where there's, provides personal and professional growth. But to do that, we have to have training budgets, and we need to be able to train accordingly. Here's the communications. And as I mentioned, you'll see everything has increased, and you see that on our weekly report. One of the things that we are recommending is that we bring on the PIO as a full-time employee. That is part of the budget that we are doing, and we add that as a staff member. Currently, it's a contract for the end of this year. Computer software. This is where the major increase has been. All the computer software goes under the Executive Department. We don't break it out by department. If you wanted to do a budget, it would really be probably spreading it out throughout, but we did not have time to do that this time. So we just put it under the Executive Department. This we brought in due to COVID-19. We enhanced some of our software, being able to pay online, being able to do other things that was required for COVID-19 as we moved forward. Training and professional development was brought up, but not to pre-COVID-19 budget amounts. And that's all that we have for the executive. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Now, we hear from the Finance Department.
Okay, I'm Rebecca Davis. I think you all know me, but this is for the people that may be watching. I'm the Finance Director for the city of Manitou Springs, and it has been my pleasure to serve the city. We are now to the most exciting part of the budget, the part that everybody waits for, the part that makes everybody's heart beat a little faster. That would be the police, no, no, it's me. Okay. It's the Finance Department. And where our vision statement is a little lengthy, so I'm just going to say that basically we want to provide a financially effective city government. And since we also take the--
Becca, I'm going to interrupt you. You need to move your, the PowerPoint to Finance, and then for each one you go. Thank you.
Roy, you're supposed to be doing this.
Becca, also, could you move the microphone a little closer to your mouth? We're having trouble hearing you. I don't think the mask helps, of course, but yeah, please.
Okay, so is that better?
Counsel, is that better? Everyone?
Okay, so everybody--
I think so, thanks.
Everybody missed my intro? Oh, my goodness. Okay, so we want to provide a financially effective city government. And also, since we do the billing for the utilities customers, we want to provide them with a seamless customer experience. And they know that they can reach out and call us at any time they have a question or need some help with their bills. So our budget is basically flat for 2021. I'll get a little bit more into that a little later. But first, I'm going to talk about our accomplishments. We've completed the processes for a request for proposals for a financial--
Becca, you have to move the PowerPoint.
Roy! Okay. We've completed the processes for a request for proposals regarding a financial advisor and for auditing services. The financial advisor has been very, very useful, and we should have done it years ago, but that was something our city administrator emphasized when she came onboard. And we finally got those formal financial policies implemented. I've been researching it for years, but it was finally with the help of the financial advisor, I was able to actually move forward with that process. And finally, we successfully implemented the remote work infrastructure so that our employees can work from home, but still continue to support our residents during the COVID-19 pandemic and any other future pandemics that may occur. Now, our goals for 2021 is, one of the big ones really is, we need to do a request for proposals for banking services. Everyone knows that Chase Bank, have they officially left the city? And we've always used Chase Bank because they had a local presence. But with their departure, that opens us up to reaching out to other banks and looking into their services and trying to figure out which would be the best for the city. We're continuing with our process of scanning in all our financial records. And also, we need to determine and implement a funding mechanism for the purchase or lease of city vehicles. We're exploring our options. And we are going to have this audit for 2020 completed and presented to City Council by July 31st. This year, it's going to be presented to City Council on October 20th. And we're going to ensure that all our checks are cut within seven business days for all awarded grants. Let's go forward.
Becca, may I add two things? Is Chase Bank hasn't left. They just don't have a, someone there, but they still have the kiosk or the drive-thru. And then the reason why we don't have the audit done in the July time as usually, as usual, is because the state gave us an extension and gave everybody an extension due to COVID-19. So we were not late with the audit. We got it done on time. Becca got everything done. We just were given the extension.
Right, we do have an extension. That is true. Thank you, Denise. Okay, so the budget, as I said, is basically flat to 20, the original 2020 budget. But we do have in there a 2% average pay-for-performance increase package totaling $60,655, and this includes benefits. Please note, this does not mean that all employees would get a 2% increase. Some may get nothing, others who are outstanding performers would get 3%. But it will average out to a 2% increase. On the next page over, I'm just going to show it real quick, like, but then slip back to this one. We did go, reach out to other cities through the city manager listserv to see what they, all the rest were doing. And 14 stated they were doing pay increases. Four stated they were not doing pay increases. But when you average it all out together, it was an average of 3% increase. So we're putting ours a little lower than that. I'm going back now. A little budget highlights again. So also, we're bringing back spot awards. They had been in the original 2020 budget, but they were taken out mid-year due to the COVID issue. And they're, these are to recognize those employees who go above and beyond the parameters of their job. For instance, Star, I think everybody should know Star. He's been with the city for over 20 years. He's in the Parks Department. In 2020, he saved the city $5,000 by locating and fixing a leak at the pool. Each department will have an allocated amount based on their number of their employees, and the awards will be vetted by the department head, HR, and city administration before being given to the employee. So this is going to be well thought out, but well deserved. Finally, I'm recommending that we remove the OpenGov software. It was a noble experiment, and while it did provide good transparency on the city website, I mean, they're one of the best for that. We additionally wanted them to help with our budget book, which is not an automated process. And they have been unsatisfactory. They've provided us with things they call workarounds for things that we were thought were going to be automated. And the cost is $20,000, and I just don't feel it's feasible to continue with this particular experiment. That's $20,000 a year, annual. Now, to get around the transparency issue, because we still want to be transparent, what we're going to do is every month, I do a financial in-depth analysis of the general fund, which is provided to City Council. And it's actually a little more useful in ways than what's been going up on our website with OpenGov, because I actually look and see why there are differences and changes and percentages differences more than what would normally be for that time of year to, and explain that in a paragraph form to, hopefully, to the layman so they can understand what's going on. And I plan to post those on the city website.
Becca, we've only had, what, 37 people go onto OpenGov? Is that correct?
Right. It was a very, very low percentage. It wasn't enough to, if, you know, half the population got onto the city website to look at those revenues and expense lines, I would say, keep it. But that has not been the case. So I've already talked about the payroll increases. And so again, our recommended payroll increase would be an average of 2% for the employees, and it's well deserved. They have all worked so hard. And a special shout-out to our Public Information Officer, who, without him, we could not have gotten this budget book together. He was invaluable. I've told him, we would have been lost without you. I've told him, "We would have been lost without you." Because this year was particularly difficult, because not only were we getting our budget numbers into our accounting software, we were also getting them to OpenGov. So we're updating two separate systems and making sure that they tied together and that they matched. So that was particularly challenging. So I'm going to be back to present other parts of the budget, because I know you can't get enough of my presentations. But now, I'm going to yield the podium to Christine Loenberg, our delightful Planning Director.
I think we're scheduled for a quick break before we go there. Can we go ahead and take a 10-minute break, Mayor?
Okay, let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. Rebecca, thank you very much.
Okay, you'll see Christine in a moment.
Okay, we'll see Christine at about 10:10. I show 10 o'clock now. We take a 10-minute break, 10:10, we'll be back here. Great, thank you all. The next topic will be the Planning Department, and we have Christine Loenberg here to discuss that. Christine, I think we've got enough players back. Counsel is here, so if you'd like to go ahead, please. Unless you -- do you need anyone?
Nope, I do not.
Okay, all right.
All right, great.
All yours.
All right, good morning. My name is Christine Ames Loenberg. I'm the Planning Director for the City of Manitou Springs. In 2020, the planning staff developed this vision. The planning and community development team will provide leadership in the city's execution of Plan Manitou, enhance development and improvement opportunities while working closely with residents to protect and maintain the character of the community through implementation of the municipal zoning code. We will accomplish this with full-time planning professionals, a strong consultant team, and collaboration with the other departments in the city. Please note in the PowerPoint presentation, the planning budget decreased 29% from the 2020 budget of $898,570 to the 2021 proposed budget of $641,601. Structural changes to the function that took place in January of 2020 are the reason for this change. The code enforcement officer and associate expenses are now under the auspice of the Police Department. Chief Churchill will address the benefits of this during his presentation. The Planning Department is still very active in the code enforcement process, in that senior professional planners provide leadership in the actions to be taken and serve as advisors to both City Council and city administration in these matters. As well, a senior planner was assigned to the Public Works Department. These expenses are now in that department's budget due to the benefit of the planner's focus there. The proposed 2021 budget includes administrative support to the planners and the boards and commissions the department is responsible for. The proposed budget also supports major initiatives that will impact the community. The primary focus of this department is the balance of long and short-term needs in the community. During times such as we are in, this is a critical challenge. Community master planning, known in our community as Plan Manitou, is the state-mandated administered process that guides our city's operations and project initiatives. This engages nearly all of the city's efforts, whether we are discussing cultural and historical aspects, infrastructure, mental health, bless you, environmental, or development needs. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is integrated in this. In 2021, the Fire and Planning Departments will be carefully collaborating and examining what resources are necessary to continue making the Hazard Mitigation Plan actionable, including any long-term impacts due to the pandemic. While considering development applications and review, a number of these are administratively reviewed and actionable, while many other reviews require input of the Planning and Historical Preservation Commissions. We determined this year, a review and associated staff work can be upwards of 50 to 65 hours per application to process and document. We continue to evaluate last year's zoning code update, intended to reduce the number of variance determinations. The intent is through stricter review criteria prepared by staff and applicant to the Planning Commission, sincere justification must be made. Through September 30th, staff have completed 41 development application reviews. We expect a robust fourth quarter in terms of additional application reviews. While there is a decline, while there was a decline, pardon me, in permit and review activity during the height of the quarantine, monthly activity is now keeping pace with 2018 and 2019. The department has issued 417 property improvement permits through September 30th. PIPs are the applications submitted by businesses, nonprofits, or private property owners to complete interior and exterior construction. Site and construction plans are reviewed by staff in coordination with Pike's Peak Regional Building. Other types of plans and permits reviewed and issued include stormwater management, erosion control, and grading. The sign program is also administered by the Planning Department. This program, in coordination with other planning reviews, protects the character of the community through consistency in signage. This has been a moderate level of activity, likely the result of the current environment we are in. Code enforcement in collaboration with the Police Department. Now, while the code enforcement officer is now immediately supervised by the Police Department, the planning professionals remain as key resources, as I just stated. In 2020, we pursued a number of major health and safety code enforcement actions. There are several major additional actions pending. These cases have been neglected for years, but through strong collaboration with the Police Department, we are making improvements. Planning will continue to be a key step in the business license issuance process by ensuring each business is appropriate to the direction set forth by Plan Manitou, meets municipal code requirements, and health and safety criteria. In 2020, staff have strengthened the community and city in a number of key ways. Strategic management requires both the continuation of long-term planning, but also thoughtfully dealing with immediate and short-term crises. In 2020, we witnessed the space that can exist between those two. At the outset of the food assessment, the community did not envision that by the time the report was issued, we would have major gaps in food distribution on a widespread scale. As a community, we are addressing this through food distribution programs, including the monthly care and share program. This will be an ongoing effort that brings critical staple food deliveries to our residents. Strong and clear municipal zoning code can create economic opportunity or hinder it. Staff have sought to update and author more than a dozen ordinances and actions this year. These actions have clarified existing opportunities and created new opportunities, including ordinance 1320, micro-mobility, which creates the opportunity through strengthening of community infrastructure and reduction of pollution, introducing shareable bikes in our community. Outside of natural disaster events, this year has seen a dramatic increase in pre-application, major development, and minor use applications, as well as property improvement permits. The use of technology to hold meetings online has not only met the state's stay-at-home and safer-at-home directives, but also allowed for much more efficient sharing of drawings and real-time development opportunities. This has allowed the city to balance safety with community needs. The city's planning functions have strengthened the community as well, in spite of the pandemic and economic challenges, by facilitating these, enforcement of municipal action, and supporting initiatives that promote physical and economic resiliency. In 2021, the city will have a number of major initiatives. Thanks in part to grant funds, we will be getting into the long overdue work of updating the city's municipal zoning code. This two-year effort will update the city's municipal code. Earlier this year, the city was awarded $100,000 in DOLA grant funds, which will be matched by $112,000 from the city. This project will be divided into two phases. In Phase 1, which kicks off by December 1st of 2020 this year, stakeholder input and concerns will be gathered. Stakeholder interests include the community, regulatory oversight agencies, staff, as well as boards and commissions. Phase 2 of this project will be work product development that will initiate approximately April 1st of 2021. Between August and December of next year, the work product will be presented and finalized. The project timeline seeks passage and conclusion of this project by December 31st of next year, 2021. The success of this will be the presentation of a final product to City Council with acceptance by December 31st. In 2020, planning staff initiated the development of Historic District Survey Plan to inventory and document historical buildings. This project is funded by a $20,000 CLG grant. The final survey plan will be used to apply for implementation grant funding by December 31st. In the HPC budget, dollars have been requested to serve as a match to that future grant award. The third goal of ensure plan reviews are completed within mandated municipal zoning code timeframes is truly a citywide goal. Municipal zoning code mandates a 10-day review by all reviewing departments. This has not been consistently met. A path has been framed, and tracking mechanisms are in place for each department to participate via software. We have identified training and coordination needs that will be critical to not only meeting this, but also conducting a thorough plan review that mitigates the risk for both the city and plan submitters. Success of this will be measured by tracking each plan review in coordination with other So the key budget highlights put forth in this budget are noted on the screen. Regular payroll decrease, as I mentioned a moment ago, and the professional services budget. This line item has been significantly reduced compared to the 2020 budget. The primary use of the funds requested will be for the municipal zoning code project and on-call engineer site development review costs. There are a number of strategic and ongoing projects that we'll address in 2021. We will address the various needs in our community to ensure infrastructure can support it. Infrastructure as a concept is more than just roads. It is healthcare, arts, education, and management systems that improve mobility. Staff are working through each of these in coordination with other departments in the community. Some of the major projects include the municipal code update, historical survey plan, the Carnegie Library, as well as the facility at the MAC, the Hazard Mitigation Discovery Program, which is a flood management mapping program we're doing in coordination with El Paso County that's funded by FEMA dollars. This fits nicely into the hazard mitigation planning of Plan Manitou. We'll also be working closely with the Fire Department on the fire training facility. Grant funds have previously been awarded for this. Moving forward in 2020 has been a difficult challenge due to the environment we work in. The TMMP, Roy will be discussing that a little bit later on, but that's truly a department, a multi-department endeavor. The e-bike and e-mobility implementation of the new ordinance, we're currently finalizing forms and processes that a vendor, such as Pike Ride, may participate in. Food assessment, the implementation of the report release was in June. As we saw, we have to reflect the COVID influence. As well, we'll be revisiting the Three Mile Plan. This is around annexation, properties around our community. What are they being used for? They're in the county. There are aggressive annexation plans currently going on around us, and we need to be wise and diligent around them. The two projects identified on this slide for capital projects are interdepartmental efforts. Implementation of the mobility study is critical to the quality of life for our residents and providing an exceptional experience for visitors. The public art project, this was a project that was initiated two years ago and will be continuing into 2021. Supporting the quasi-judicial functions of the planning and historical commissions is a very important part of the Planning Department's function. This year, we spent time analyzing the staffing level of our department against comparably-sized mountain tourist-driven communities. We found that our department is average in comparison. We also studied the monthly support staff requirements for each board and commission. We identified ways that redistribution of certain projects could improve efficiency, as well as working with the boards to prioritize and manage available staff support. We seek administrative support in this budget to adequately support these important functions. In November, each of these, OSAC, Housing Advisory Board, Planning Commission, and the Historic Preservation Commission will present to you. Special projects that are to be brought forth include implementation of a habitability code, energy-efficient grant programs, historical building mini-grants, historical survey, open space and trail acquisition, as well as trail maintenance projects. And with that, that concludes the Planning Department's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Nicely done. We hear from the Police Department.
I think as Rebecca said earlier, this is the most exciting part of the presentation. And why is that? Because Police Department is probably the entity within the city that is most in the public eye, in the public domain, most likely to be challenged, to be met with challenges. And I think the Police Department sets the tone for the city. You know, as goes the Police Department, so goes the city and the attitude about the city. And I think 2020 has been, at least in my career, which started in 1993, the most challenging year for law enforcement, locally and nationally. And being a brand-new chief of police, and this being my first year, it has been quite an experience, a learning experience, and something that I have sought to learn a lot from. And I think that our agency, the Manitou Springs Police Department, is a leader in where this country wants to go with law enforcement. So I'd like to start off by reading our vision statement. And our vision statement has been our vision statement since I came to town. And so this is pre-COVID and pre-national-related issues. And that statement is "Our imperative is to provide our citizens with the highest possible level of service. Although our primary mission is to provide law enforcement services to the city, our officers are being called upon to build relationships throughout their service areas, aid the community in solving a multitude of challenges," right? We are here to do more than law enforcement. We are here to address quality of life issues. And it's been my experience and my career, and I've learned, that if you address quality of life issues, crime goes down. And if crime goes down, the need for police goes down, the need for police response goes down, and your budget goes down. When it comes to the number of officers on the street, the number of officers going to court that the city's paying for, the number of officers on overtime, the number of officers looking for warrants, it affects the bottom line. So an operating philosophy that seeks to reduce crime through enhancing quality of life affects the bottom line. And that's why our vision statement is what it is, especially for our budget presentation. So for 2020, our budget was 1.9 million. For 2021, it's 2.65 million. And that is only an increase of $70,000, but we are adding two police officers, we've added a detective, and we have a multitude of software coming on board that is going to enhance or increase the dollars we're spending on that. So overall, in 2020, we were able to save $88,000 through tightening the belt and for looking for those little ways, and I'll get into those in a little bit. So while our budget's going up a little bit, we're actually saving quite a bit of money. Accomplishes for 2020? And I have to run this, don't I? And I have to run this, don't I?
Yeah.
No, thank you, Roy. So again, these follow along the lines of who we are as an agency and I think who we are as a community. My goals and accomplishments aren't based in numbers, the amount of tickets written, the amount of arrests made, the amount of personal contacts made, but our goals and accomplishments are based on what the community thinks of us. What have we done for the community? What have we done to raise quality of life? Accomplishment number one is the Beehive. It opened its doors last Tuesday, and this was through a year-long endeavor to build a network of people and of teams and of building energy to bring to the city of Manitou a wellness center that addressed behavioral health, addressed social service needs, food, clothing, employment, mental health, and is overall our overall philosophy of quality of life. In June, the Manitou Springs Police Department brought Compass Consulting from Indianapolis, Indiana, to town to put on a two-day training seminar to garner the interest and the excitement for this facility. Last Tuesday, it opened its door with Aspen Point being there to start helping our citizens. All of this without spending a dime of city money, without spending a dime of police officer overtime, without spending a dime of on-duty police overtime, yet it will reduce the crime rate in our town, it will enhance quality of life, it will build trust and legitimacy within the police department, and that affects our bottom line. The next accomplishment was we worked diligently with District 14 and have developed, and with the fire department, have developed a rapid response plan, a crisis response plan with our school system, something that was in the works before, but it is now. I talked to their security officer, Janie, this past week. It's almost completely finished. There's just a couple of reviews. But we now have a holistic program put in place so that if we have a flood, if we have a fire, if we have a bear get into the school, or we have an active shooter, there's a plan in place. We know what we're doing, we know how to address it, and we're going to accomplish that mission, we're going to do it safely, and we're going to protect our children. The next bullet point on 2020 accomplishments is revise and approve the internal affairs and use of force review. We started this beginning of the year, and how timely. One of the very initial processes we implemented this year was a supervisory special report that took every single use of force, put it on the street supervisor to document in a two-page report, and that put that use of force, no matter how minor, into a three-tier review and evaluation process. It would go from the officer to the street supervisor, who's required to go talk to the officer, talk to the witnesses, talk to the arrested person or the victim or whoever else is involved in that incident. It then goes to the administrative supervisor for review and approval, and then it comes to me. And I sign off on it or I kick it back, depending on what the situation is. But it now has a three-tier level review before it goes in the file. That was done at the beginning of the year. Also, for internal affairs, one of the major accomplishments, I think, for our agency in our city this year is we hired a detective, a guy retired from the El Paso County Sheriff's Department after 23 years. He was a major crimes investigator. He was also an internal affairs investigator. He is paying great dividends beyond working cases, writing warrants and search warrants for our agency. He's helping me write policy. He's helping our officers learn how to do the job of an investigator. He is a mentor, he is a trainer, he is onboard to help us. And again, with the bottom line, because our late shift officers, who traditionally, if they took a burglary at 2:00 in the morning, would have to come in during the day to go look for, to go write a warrant for the suspect, to talk to the victims, to talk to the homeowners, to talk to the prosecutor's office. Now, that late shift officer could be home in bed, asleep, because they worked a 12-hour shift the night before, and our detective, not on overtime but on duty, is the one across the street at the courthouse, talking to the prosecutor's office, talking to the victims, talking to the witnesses, and writing the arrest warrants. Saves us money. Evidence audit. Many of you that were here before know that we had some issues to address up in the property room in our evidence. I've hired a consultant this year. He has done two full audits in January and September. Both of those audits were passed successfully with numbers well below the acceptable standard for error. I'm very proud of that. Sergeant Melissa Warden was assigned to take that task on and to bring our facility in line, and that has happened. We still have a lot to do up there. A lot of that will have to do more with the structure of the facility itself, but our books and our numbers are in order. All of our comm's projects to date have been brought up or have been accomplished. Again, the detectives mentioned here maintain and improve community relations and trust with the police department during COVID and national police protests. And again, I think that is what our police department, that's what our community is all about. If you can balance us with what you see going on nationwide, distrust in the police, delegitimizing the police, right? Community protest, riots, looting, things like that, you don't see that in Manitou. Our community, because of the way we address the community, even in times of COVID, has our back, and we have theirs. Our people know that they can walk into our police department at any time and talk to me. My door is open. Our officers are directed, their task was spending the extra time on every incident to talk to our citizens, help them fix the problems, help them fix the crises in their life that led to the police engaging them in that moment. We're not there to take the report, we're not there to put the handcuffs on you, we're not there to write you a ticket. We're there to talk to you, help you, and see what we can do to make a connection for you to help resolve the issue that led to us dealing with you in that moment. That builds trust, that builds legitimacy, and that builds pride in our city. It builds pride in the officer, and it builds pride in the citizen when they see our officer on the street. There's open communication. And in the future, when we get out from under COVID, we're going to start implementing plans that we had planned for 2020, but hopefully we can do this in 2021 with community meetings, task force meetings, neighborhood watch meetings. I've got ideas to do things like church with the chief, walk with the chief and the mayor, walk with council. We're talking about bike riding, maybe implementing a bike unit so we can get the public to join with us and go on bike rides. We're going to be out in the community. You'll see us, you'll talk to us. The community will know who we are, not by our uniform, but by our name and by our face. One of these programs we initiated under this is a weekly patrol plan. I tasked both of our street sergeants to do a weekly patrol plan. And this, what all this is, is simple, but it is what are your people? And they call it the side of the week. Sergeant Savine has a side of the week, which is a group of officers. Sergeant Ballard has a side of the week, which is a group of officers, and they flip-flop in their schedules. What has that sergeant got planned for his people to proactively do during this coming week? Those are initiated by me and driven by me, they're initiated, driven by the sergeants. But most importantly, what goes on those patrol plans first is what's initiated by our citizens, including council members. But people that live in Manitou, if they say, "I've got a speeding problem on my block", if I've got a vagrancy problem on my block, if I've got loud noise on my block, if I've got whatever the issue is, our focus at the ground level, our street supervisor, our patrolman level, our focus on that patrol plan is what has the community told us they want? We focus on that. So goals for 2021. The Beehive, you're going to hear a lot about that. Again, number one issue, police are responsible for reducing crime, reducing fear of crime, and enhancing quality of life. My experience has taught me, you enhance quality of life first, the fear of crime goes down, crime goes down, because the neighborhood helps you prevent, deter, and reduce crime. So the Beehive, number one goal in initiative, started in 2020, will be up and running, and we're going to build on that exponentially in 2021. There was just a great, there was a great article about it in Thursday's paper. The community is behind this, Aspen Point, TESA will have an office space there, Partners for Healthy Choices will be utilizing the office, and we're also going to have experienced, credentialed people from the public doing pro bono work there to fill in those open hours. So that the long-term goal is that any citizen, any resident, any person in Manitou Springs that has a need, has a crisis, has an issue, needs food, needs clothing, needs behavioral health, needs mental health, just needs to talk to somebody right now. It doesn't have to be the police every time, the police can be there to assist, get you here, but anybody that needs a service in Manitou can come to the Beehive. And that's why it's named the Beehive. Think about it, it's the hive, right? We are citizens of this town, but we work together, we come together, and we have a safe place, a secure place that we can all learn, help each other. It's not the place you go, it's the place to be, is one of the mottos we've come up with. This is coming for our citizens, and because if you have that, if you have a crisis response entity, the police aren't called as much, crime goes down, it affects our bottom line. That feeds into the next goal for 2021, the police department's build trust and legitimacy within the community. And that spoke about that, but that goes into what I want to do coming out from under COVID is get with the community. Task force meetings, face-to-face meetings, coffee with a cop. Every month, I would like to put a meeting on in Memorial Hall where we get out the whiteboard and we talk about what's our crime rate, what's our current concerns, what are current issues, what does the public see as an issue or concern? Bring it to us, let's talk, let's work together on this. Going to bring in some guest speakers too, probably bring the prosecutor in, maybe the sheriff, maybe the judge, to educate our public on public safety, make it exciting, make it an event. And then goal for our police department inside the house is to bring our agency up to full staffing. I asked the other day, I said, "Who here in this agency remembers a time that the Manitou Springs Police Department was at full staffing?" 17 people, nobody. Nobody. I mean, they've been down to six cops, you know, and six short, and currently we're two short. But what does that mean? What does that mean for the officer on the street? It means that he's not only working his shift, but he's working someone else's shift, someone that's not no longer even on the department, or somebody that's on a training day, or somebody that's in court. Our guys are being run ragged, they're being run thin. And if you're tired, if you're wore out, and you're overworked, and you can't get a day off, that affects your ability to be productive, to be proactive. But to me, what that affects most of all is your ability to talk to people, your patience, right? You have to be rested, you have to be energized, and you have to be energetic. And if you're working seven days a week, 12-hour shifts, you just don't have the time or the patience or the attitude to implement our goals. Bringing us up to those 17 officers, and hopefully in the future, maybe a couple more, will help enable that. It also affects the bottom line. If we send people off to training because they've got the range, or they've got other duties and responsibilities that the state requires, currently we have to backfill that with a guy that was off-duty and pay him overtime. In the future, hopefully that problem's eliminated. We're also looking at maybe a new shift scheduling, if manpower allows, that gets guys more time off. Capital improvement projects. This past year, we were supposed to get two police cars, we didn't because of COVID, but ramping up into looking at that, we sat down with Karen Burchold, and we're talking about a lease program, a citywide lease program. I don't know the feasibility of that or where that may go in the future, but that may help us reduce that $110,000 cost to buy two police cars. Anything we can do to save money and be more efficient, we're looking into and we're up for. But currently, the plan is 110 grand to put two more police cars on the street. Our evidence facility, the improvements needed in the evidence facility, the physical improvements, a gun safe, storage units, refrigerator, things like that are currently coming out of the police department pocket. And by that, I mean our special revenue fund, which is funds taken from traffic tickets. We're paying for that stuff ourselves this coming year. And then handheld radios. We just bought six radios, four radios this past year. This 15,000 is set aside. If we need more radios, we're going to further our study on that. I don't know at this time if we're going to need to spend that money. We're getting two additional police officers, I'll probably have to buy two radios, but we'll see. That's money set aside for that, but if we don't need it, we're not going to spend it. Cost savings. We saved $88,000 this year, according to my paperwork here, in our budget. When COVID started, the city administrator looked at us all and said, "We gotta tighten the belt, find what you can find to help save some money." So we can save people's jobs, we can keep cash in the bank for a rainy day. So we did all the little things. We dug deep, eliminated car washes. Guys were getting car washes at the drive-through car wash, six bucks a pop. We want our cars to look good, we want to present an image. I think the police department's part of the marketing image for Manitou, but it was $6 a pop every time we went and got a police car car washed. We cut that out. Restrictions on gas. I found out people were putting 91 octane in their gas tank. Stop that immediately. I researched with Ford, talked to them, there's no need to put 91 octane in one of our Ford police interceptors. It's 85 octane now is what everybody's using. That's a dollar or more a gallon every time you fill that car up. We eliminated the 15-minute shift overtime. Our officers overlap so that they can talk. Day shift did this, this is what you need to know going into late shift. We're having a problem here, we're having a problem there, you may see this coming up tonight. Same thing with late shift coming into day shift. Officers were getting paid 15 minutes for that overlap. We eliminated that. That caused a bit of consternation, but that was one of the cuts we made. 15 minutes per officer every day adds up over time. Two officers in a car for three months. So for three months, to save gas, save wear and tear on our vehicles, instead of driving two cars through town, it dramatically decreased our visible presence in town, but we didn't have much of a crime problem going on. COVID, people were staying home. We put two officers in one car. That way, they're always together, they're always mutually supporting, but one car's not burning up a tank of gas every day. We hired that detective. He takes all the work during the day for officers. He does the warrants, he goes to court, talks to the prosecutor's office, he follows up with victims, he follows up with suspects. He works hard so that officer that worked all night doesn't have to come in on their day off, or doesn't have to come in before their shift to do more work. Also, to me, what that means is everybody gets a phone call. If your house gets broken into, if your car gets broken into, if your child's a runaway, it's important for you to get a phone call from the Manitou Springs Police Department following up on that incident. Nobody wants to feel like they've been left alone, or forgotten, or set aside. He calls people now. It helps build that trust, helps build that legitimacy, builds pride in our community. And we contracted with a new uniform vendor. In the past, we used Galls, which is a Colorado Springs company, it's a nationwide company, but they had an office here. I partnered with the chief down in Fountain, Chris Heber, and he told me that they use a contract guy, a nickname of Mud, out of Denver. He comes, he'll come down to us, he measures us, he gets our uniforms for us, but we did a bid system where we compared their prices to Galls prices. On average, 10% savings on every single item we bought. And when you're talking about three, four grand to outfit one police officer with equipment, 10% adds up over time. We eliminated the spending account at Galls for each officer to go down and buy things every year, which was about $600 per officer per year, and instead, because you'll spend that money, if you've got an open account, you'll go down there and you'll spend it, even if you don't need it, you know? Buy an extra pair of boots. So what we did, to be responsible for the citizens of Manitou and with our money, we changed that. We now have a uniform allowance where each officer gets $200 twice a year. So they get $400 a year. It's a cut, it's handed to them, but they've got to spend that on uniform stuff. So each officer got cut 200 bucks, but when it comes down to it, that's about what they need per year anyway. A police officer's shirt is over $100 for one shirt. We found a substantial savings there. Budget highlights for 2021. This is where Senate Bill 217 starts adding up. It's going to add up more and more over the next couple of years, so we've started forecasting for that now. Video storage. Everybody knows we were body-worn cameras. I now usually wear a body-worn camera. We are contracted with Axon, which is the company that provides our body-worn cameras. When 217 went into effect, I called them about a month later, and she said, "Your officers are starting to use more and more and more video." She goes, "Here now, at the beginning of July, you've already hit your entire year's allotment of video storage. We're already over the bill because of what it requires now to be on the street, to be a police officer, and the amount of things you have to record." So that will go up to about $12,000 in her estimate, and what that does, it gives us an unlimited data storage. For 12 grand, we get 17 officers, unreded. For 12 grand, we get 17 officers unrestricted video storage. But that law's going to require that. Every time we get out of the car, every time we contact somebody in a police manner, body camera has to go on. All that video has to be stored, all that video has to be retained. And in 2023, all that video will have to be uploaded to the Attorney General's Office for safekeeping. So that bill's doubling. For this coming year, we're adding IA Pro and Blue Team. Those are both in-house software programs. IA Pro is an internal affairs program. It will manage, it's a reporting system for internal complaints, internal discipline, internal review. It also has a red flag system, which is required by Colorado law, that will tell us. Not only will it help us work through affairs issues and work on complaints and keep all that organized and keep it memorialized, it has a red flag system on there. And that's how we look out after our police officers. The red flag system will tell you, this guy's called in sick, he's had a resistor, he had a vehicle pursuit, he got injured. Those things add up over time, and the system will tell you, you may want to start talking to this officer, you may want to start looking after their wellness. It'll tell you, this may be an officer that needs some intervention before they go back on the street. The system has that built in. It also does the tracking for us, and this is the Blue Team does. That's what the state currently is recommending. Under 217, every time a police officer gets out the car and engages a citizen in a police-related engagement, police-initiated, we now have to do a 17-point report and keep that information in-house. In 2023, all of that information will have to be uploaded to the Attorney General's Office into a database so that the public can go to that database, click on that officer, and see everything they've done. Currently, the state is recommending Blue Team because at some point in the next three years, we are going to have to comply with that law, and we're going to have to have an ability to get the information in-house to that website. Blue Team helps track that. It also does your use of force. It'll take away, right now, currently, we have a paper system for use of force specials. Blue Team puts that all online. I use it in Indianapolis, the county uses it, I think Colorado Springs uses it. It puts it all online, it keeps it, it has a three-tiered system as well. The officer writes up the report, the supervisor checks it, they put in their findings and determinations in it, and then goes to the administrative supervisor for review, and then it will finally come to me, review, and sign off on, and it's kept in digital storage instead of a file in a drawer in my office. And then vehicle maintenance. That will probably go up. It just goes to make sense. Currently, our fleet, we have two 2018s, two 2016s, three 2014s, a 2012, a 2010, and a 1999. We haven't bought cars, we bought two cars in 2018. These cars, most of them, run 24/7, seven days a week. That adds up in a lot of maintenance costs. Our current contract is with Manitou Auto. We've been able to stay under what the contract is budgeted for, but the older the fleet gets, the more problems you start having with your vehicles, the more that maintenance cost goes up. Code enforcement. An exciting addition to the police department this year. I'll tell you, it was an enlightening experience. For me, I don't have much experience with code enforcement, neither did much of the police department. But what we learned right away is that it's a natural partnership. Code enforcement, he's enforcing the law, he's enforcing the code of our city, the policies set down by our city, and our town's expectations of how things are done. So there's a bit of a culture change that's going on there, that has gone on there. I think our city is looking for those changes. And if I can get to my notes. Those are documentation, enforcement, education, and partnerships, right? If you're trying to put a fence up in your backyard, you want to do it right. You want to do it the right way. There's a system there that has to be followed. And some of these systems are fairly bureaucratic, there's a lot of red tape, and people could use help getting through that process. Code enforcement officer can help with that. If we have individuals in town that don't want to follow code, then I think we need to hold them responsible. And I think we need a code enforcement officer and a code enforcement system that does that. Code enforcement office also provides for safety, safety for fire-related issues, traffic-related issues, public safety-related issues. And we're working hard to build this partnership. I think council knows that Monday, this coming Monday, we have a brand-new code enforcement officer starting. Her name is Cindy Schwartz. She's coming from a town over by Grand Junction. And I'll tell you what got her this job. We had two final candidates, both excellent, excellent. I would hire both of them immediately. But what got Cindy the job is personality. She's proactive, she's high-energy, she's energetic, she's going to be engaged, she's going to see the problem coming before we see it. She's going to see what's coming around the track and help us prepare for it and head it off at the pass. And I think that will benefit our citizens, it'll benefit the police department, and benefit the city council, and especially will benefit planning, right? Because code enforcement works for the police department, they will work directly under Sergeant Melissa Warden, and that's a great partnership. I've already seen that pay dividends with a couple issues in town. But planning needs somebody that gets in there, hits the ground running, and helps move the ball down the field. And I think Cindy Schwartz is going to do that. And that's what earned her this spot. We've got a lot of work to do when it comes to code enforcement, and I think Cindy has the experience to land on her feet Monday and set up processes and a way to document things and a way to produce that documentation that currently we don't have. I think we're going to have that, and I think that's what our city expects, and I think that's what council expects. We're going to make it happen. That's into my presentation. I want to thank you, council, for a great first year here. October 1st was my one-year anniversary. New to Colorado, I'm new to being a chief, I'm new to Manitou Springs, I'm new to a lot of the duties and responsibilities. It's been quite a learning curve, but many of the friendships and partnerships that I have made within the city administration and within city council have made this possible. And I especially want to thank the citizens of Manitou. They're not hesitant, call me on the phone, talk to me on the street, meet me at the Red Dog Cafe, ask to come to a meeting. They set our direction, they set our priorities, and they have helped me a great deal. And I cannot leave this podium without giving kudos to the police officers on the Manitou Springs Police Department. They have welcomed me, they have challenged me, they have tried to bring me into their culture, and they have tried to push back from my culture. And we are working hard together to blend those because I think there is a blending that's good, and we're going to work on that as we come into 2021. But I'll leave you with this. My door is open, the police department's door is open. If you ever have a need, if you ever have a question, if you ever have a desire, if you ever want to see a change in law enforcement, a change in an operating procedure, or you want to ask a question, why are you doing this? Come talk to me. Call me on the phone, send me an email. But what I really like is to meet me for some coffee, meet me for lunch, and let's go talk. Because the Manitou Springs Police Department is your police department. It's the police department that belongs to citizens in Manitou. And it takes a partnership, it takes working together and good communication to make that successful. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, chief.
Can I just add a couple of things? Good job, chief. Code enforcement last year did not have its own budget, so that's why you see it was under-planning. So we have broken that out because we think it's really important to start tracking those expenses as we look at fines and those type of things. So we cannot do that without this. The other thing I want to mention is due to chiefs and all the department heads' leadership, for instance, the high octane was used in all the departments. We've looked at that changing to help with all the savings. Uniform allowances now in every single department whenever we all came on, that was not the case. So there's been some real cost savings that has been taking place in each department, and it's how the department heads work together. They share their best practices, and they talk about it, and then see what's happening in their department to help with each other. So I just want to share that. Thank you, chief.
I came here, I said I want to be a spoke in a wheel, not a silo. And that is our operating philosophy, I think. We all work together to get the mission accomplished.
Very good, thank you. See, next we will hear from Fire Department Chief John Forsett.
We use diesel, by the way. And while we were way ahead of schedule, we're probably on schedule now? By the way, that's professional banter, okay? I love this guy. He's a wonderful chief. So, and you missed one slide. Do you want to hit that one that you missed?
Chief, we're still way ahead of schedule, so you have a little bit of time.
I know we are. So, John Forsett, I'm your fire chief. And we'll talk about the fire department's budget for 2021. First of all, this has been a very fun process. Honestly, these two folks are incredible. I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the vision and the efforts of all the other department heads, and the collaboration that we have now is unbelievable. It's incredible, honestly. Very collaborative, and we work very well together. And of course, I want to thank you guys for being here and leading us and providing us the direction and the policy that leads our city. I really like being together. I prefer being together, watching you folks on those little bitty screens and having all the communication errors is just, it's terrible, it's terrible. So this is a really wonderful environment, and I really appreciate that we can all be together this morning. So, talking about the fire department's vision statement, just before we drop into the budget. Our vision statement is enhancing the quality of life for our citizens, businesses, and visitors by preventing or minimizing injury or loss of life and property or damage to the environment from the effects of fire, hazardous conditions, natural disasters, and medical or traumatic events. I think we do a really, really, really good job of that, and I'll maybe talk just a little bit about it as we go through. But when we look at the budget from last year, or this year, over into next year, we're actually doing a really good job, and we're going to decrease our budget, although our budget is mostly flat, we're going to decrease that. And I'll show you just a slide at the end that talks just about two things specifically about why that's going to happen. I don't think that anything in our budget will ever tell you what the value of your fire department really is. It's, believe it or not, and it's hard for folks to maybe comprehend that when we sit in these settings, but the fire department is your largest department in this city by personnel and its efforts, by far the largest department. We have 40 volunteers along with our six paid folks. And I'm so glad that we got rid of the organizational chart that was part of the fire department here because the organizational chart showed you that you have six paid personnel, and it really lacked luster to what your fire department really represents. So not only do we make up the largest department, but also when you look out through the city, we're also the largest volunteer, regular volunteer force anywhere within the city as well. So that's with 40 volunteers consistently, day in, day out, working and training together. Since we're about to talk about my budget, I want to kind of jump right into a question that was brought up to me, that was brought up from a council meeting, I think two council meetings ago, where we talked about opportunities for revenue within the fire department. I don't know who brought that up, but revenue opportunity that was brought up was that of looking at possibly billing for those things the fire department does outside of the city of Manitou Springs, its city limits. And in particular, the incline was one of those. So first, before I go into the incline, let me talk about some of the other things to go on around the city that we respond to and let you have an understanding of the relationships that we have. So when we look at the U-Pass corridor, we look at areas up on the Mesa, the Trestle Trail area, those homes that are up there, we look at Cave of the Winds. As you know, all those areas are outside the city of Manitou Springs. But what's important about that when it comes to our response is we have an agreement with El Paso County for mutual aid services, actually automatic aid services to those areas. So we do that in cooperation with them. As you know, El Paso County doesn't have any structural firefighting forces, they don't have medical response forces, they do have search and rescue, but they're not there for those normal medics that we deal with every day. They're not able to perform extrication and traffic hazard mitigation as needed, so they ask us to do that. So it's a collaborative effort to do that, and we do that through memorandums of understanding, which previous councils have agreed with. That's also reciprocated back when it comes to Wildland. They're right there on our doorstep, following up on our responses for the Wildland fires that are out there. And I can't say enough about that particular effort. I mean, right now, my number one concern is wildfire mitigation, wildfire response. I could talk all day about that. My friend Christine over here is going to help us move forward and create some five-year plans and create very good hazard mitigation efforts that protect our values at risk. We have to look so much further outside our community in our cooperation with other agencies. When you look at our reservoir, that's our single source of water for the city of Manitou Springs. And being that, it's a very, very large watershed area that we need to protect. And it only takes one incident, and it doesn't have to be a big incident. It doesn't have to be these things that are going on in Wyoming and northern Colorado. This is something that could just be localized to our watershed. But if you fill our watershed with sediment, or you fill the hurricane gulch down to our intake with debris, and we destroy that water source, that's extremely important to us. We have nothing else, other than real high-cost water from somebody else. So we're working really, really hard to create a plan to try to protect our values at risk as they pertain to the city. Crystal Park, of course, they've stood up their own fire department. We brought them under our wing years ago. We used to charge for Crystal Park's fire services. We were their only response. We assisted, we put them under our wing, and we assisted them to bring up their own fire department. It's up at the top of the park where their fire station's located, and we no longer charge them dollars for our response. We now have a mutual aid agreement, an automatic aid agreement with them so that we can assist their fires, firefighters. That's also reciprocated back to the city. When we have structured fires within the city of Manitou Springs, we have those grass fires, even smoke incidents, Crystal Park is always automatic aid to us as well. So we reciprocate all of those responses, and they're of extreme value to the city of Manitou Springs. Finally, I just wanted to talk about the incline then briefly. The incline, I think, is unique and maybe misunderstood. And what I mean by that is we talk a lot about the city of Colorado Springs owning the bottom of the incline, and different ownership as you go up the incline, and how could we charge or not charge, those kinds of things for that. I think it's important for me, and maybe, and certainly, I think, for Brian as well as the police chief. There's two parcs of land that are owned by the city of Colorado Springs at the base of the incline, which basically go halfway up the incline. Got to keep in mind, that's ownership, that's not jurisdiction. The city of Manitou Springs city limits goes halfway up the incline. If you remember, the old incline where the trains passed, roughly, that's the spot where the city limits goes to. So that's our jurisdiction. So as your fire chief, I have to tell you that it's our responsibility to respond within our jurisdiction to incidents of all types, all hazards. So when I look at that aspect of can we generate revenue from that, I have to honestly say no. That's already a tax agency. If you look up the county assessor's site and you view the assessor's site as it pertains to land ownership and tax entity, you will see city of Colorado Springs owns that, but the tax entity is the city of Manitou Springs. We have a responsibility to respond within that jurisdiction. Then the next part of that, and the reason I bring all this up is because it really is complicated if you were to consider doing something like that. But you get to the steep part of the incline, that's unincorporated El Paso County. It's in El Paso County, but there's not an ownership, it's unincorporated, and it's not taxed by Manitou Springs. And then when you get pretty much to the false summit of the incline, on up to the top, that's the United States government, the Forest Service that owns that up there. So what I would just tell you is we have a very good response plan up there. Even when the properties were swapped from Broadmoor Strawberry Fields to which was Colorado Springs, and from Broadmoor's ownership of that portion of the incline, and they made that swap, I had discussions with fire chief, a fire chief, deputy fire chief with Colorado Springs, who was in charge of operations in El Paso County. Currently, we respond there, and I want this to continue, believe me, because we're very fast and effective. And what we do is provide immediate care for patients of traumatic or medical events. El Paso County then follows us up, and they perform an extrication of the patient from that hillside, bar trail, whatever. Even the first third, first mile of bar trail is still within the city of Manitou Springs. So it's very effective. What we, as a chiefs group, talked about though was what it would look like if we tried to do it by property ownership, and we brought Colorado Springs in, who would we deal with? Where's the person on the incline or on bar trail? Where's the person on the incline or on bar trail? Is it an El Paso County call? Is it a Colorado Springs area? Is it Manitou? Do we want those folks running those two engines? And I'll say one of three or two of three probably, which would be Engine 5, Engine 13, or Heavy Rescue 17 from Clearout on Carefree to Tutt Boulevard, all the way through our city limits to come and provide care for somebody who's probably a taxpaying citizen of the city of Manitou Springs, while we sit in the house and let them do our thing? So I get really concerned about us not being able to provide proper response, for instance, as up on that hillside. Granted, it does take some of our resources out of town, but I've never argued that too much that it concerns me, because we always keep a force in town. It's just kind of the way our mutual aid would work anyway, but it's within our own jurisdiction. So I just wanted to share that with you, maybe answer some questions that might be pertinent to that thought process that was brought forth a couple council meetings ago. And if you have any further questions of me on that, please feel free to ask them. I'm happy to talk about it. There we go. So in 2020, I almost feel that it's not fair to stand up here for any of us and talk about our accomplishments in three or four bullet points. It's incredible what we do. And certainly, as a fire department, I talk about the overall general budget accomplishments of the fire department in these three bullet points, but the fact of the matter is, I got 46, 50 people that are accomplishing tremendous things every single day. They're saving lives, they're protecting property, and not only that, but they're improving themselves to benefit the public. And it's very difficult to just stick to three bullet points. I think Chief Churchill brought up one really good point that's not on mine, and that's that we're developing an incredible incident response plan to all the District 14 schools to include those, the elementary school up in Cascade, or Speedway Park, actually. This is a huge goal that we set for ourselves, because what we're going to do is we're going to be able to all cooperate together, knowing what each other's response plan is, and work together long before we ever get there. My folks are constantly working on pre-incident plans for the downtown area and huge target hazards that we have. And as it pertains to wildland, as I say, that's huge to me. It scared me to death, especially since the campfire, and I've seen how fire behavior has changed over the years and some of the sciences behind it. But when I saw Paradise be burned over and those 18,000 homes lost, I looked at that and I said, that's Manitou Springs. Plain and simple, that's Manitou Springs. We have phone winds, we have topography, the geography, the weather patterns that just line up, that's going to take just one hour out of our life and absolutely destroy our community. It's all it's going to take. So that truly does scare me. But to that end, I have folks who are out, they've been deploying all summer, two fires in New Mexico. I've got folks right now in our Type 6 engine in Wyoming. Couple other folks are on the Cameron Peak Fire, and one young lady on our department who's just out there, just absorbent experience left and right, is on a contract engine out in California and coming back tomorrow after a 14-day deployment. So great stuff happening. Here's our accomplishments as they pertain to the budget and this last following year. Each firefighter this year, everybody's going to tell you COVID was the big thing, obviously, but for the fire department, COVID drove tons and tons and tons of protocol and guideline changes for how we respond to medical incidents. It was difficult. It was difficult for my folks and myself as well, because we are an industry and not... Forget the industry. As a department, we're a very aggressive medical department. In the entire region, we have more waivers than any other department in the region because of our environment up on the incline. We can give more drugs. We can reduce injuries of dislocations and things like that. So we have a really fantastic scope of service that we can provide medically, but all of a sudden with COVID coming up, now we're telling, we're being told, stand back from your patients. Don't get involved until you ask them lots of questions. Sometimes you call them from the outside. We were never used to doing anything like that. We talked people out of going to the hospital this year, where normally we were, yeah, you really do need to go. And it's difficult to do that with patients. So our guidelines were a tremendous, tremendous change for us. And that all comes down from our physician advisor. We worked really, really closely with the whole West group of Keller County. We're part of their medical group. So it was really, it was tough on one hand, but it was really fantastic on the other. The tough part of that is we're in El Paso County, so we fall under their incident command system and their emergency command center. But medically, we work under Keller County. So we had to juggle some balls there to make things work, but it worked really well. We got some grants from FEMA to recover some of the costs that we had to incur for personal protective gear. So COVID was huge for us. One of the things that was most exciting for me this year was I got to promote new officers into new ranks. And the day before the governor declared the shutdown, those officers were announced and provided their assignments, and they were, they're young officers, they're full of energy, and it was like I shot the gun at the starting line, and they were going to take off running. We had a fantastic meeting, plans in place, and then the next day we shut down, and it was just, ah, took the wind out of our sails. It was tough. So anyway, those changes are still going to happen, it's just they, unfortunately, we're having to bring them out of the starting block a little bit slower. Finally, thank you to you folks. We were able to place our new emergency response vehicle in service. That vehicle was... I have tough folks, I got to be honest with you. They were driving our old medical unit, and it would stall while they were driving. And this has happened in the past, and it required us to get a new computer for the vehicle. And you guys all know what happens when a vehicle stalls while you're driving, you lose power steering, you lose power brakes, you lose a lot of functionality of the vehicle. And thank goodness it didn't happen very long before I found out about it, and we just immediately sidelined that vehicle. But you folks let us continue with emergency spending to get that vehicle replaced. It was a very old vehicle, it was a used police car, so, and he just told you how they beat theirs up. We took our chances with it, though, and it did really well for many, many years. So, looking at our goals for 2021, it's never been a secret, you folks all know, that the number one priority in my world is training my folks to protect the public. Every single time, I'm going to tell you exactly the same time, my folks need to be trained, they need to be provided with the proper equipment, materials, environment, et cetera, to do that training. If you imagine the way the fire department works, you have a combination fire department. That means that you get two people on duty every day. One hopefully is a paramedic, another EMTB with an IV certification. All those folks have many fire certifications, but when it comes to the response to come to your house for a structured fire, let's say, you're counting on 40 promises, right? So those 40 promises need to be trained properly. And what I really, really try to do in my vision is how do I get them into that place where they're able to train because they're volunteers? The problem is, they all have lives, just like you and I do. They have jobs that are outside the fire department, they have family, they have activities, soccer, recitals, whatever they happen to be. So if I put on one training, let's say, per month now, that is based upon one of the fire department's disciplines, fire behavior, whatever it happens to be, and I capture, let's say, a group of eight of those individuals, I've missed 32 people, an opportunity to train 32 people. So somehow, we have to get those other 32 people in, which means we have to operate the training more often. What makes that difficult for us is we don't have an environment to conduct that training. Certainly, you've seen what we do outside the back of the fire station, and I will tell you this, there's not a department anywhere in this region, I'll even say in the state, that can get the hose off of that fire engine and onto your front step faster than my folks. They're great at that. But what concerns the hell out of me is those folks need to be able to get that through your home, getting through pinch points down long hallways, upstairs, through attics, downstairs, all of the myriad of things that they need to do to do that. They also need to perform rescues interior, they need to be performing ventilation interior. There's so much that we don't get the opportunity to do on an interior structure. So for my whole world, as you guys know, I've been doing everything I can to create an environment. Our only other environments that we can do that in is 17 miles away or downtown Colorado Springs, where we don't have opportunity to do that. Now, if you take that same number, if I need to do that training for a group, let's say four or five times, for each individual discipline, there's no way we have that opportunity to do that elsewhere. It's just impossible to do. And especially when you consider that the core group of my folks who really do the hard work are usually the ones doing the instruction and are at those trainings, and those are the folks I want downtown whenever the 700 block has an issue. So always, training environment first. I can't thank Christine enough, I can't thank our other leadership enough for helping me work through the training environment issues that we need to work for and to get that environment built for our folks. I promise you, it's going to be well worth everything that we do on that effort. Finally, as far as goals, and I just want to say this, these goals are supported right here in our capital projects for 2021. The driveway out in front of the fire station is really starting to make me nervous. If you have been engaged at all, you'll know that that driveway out there has been pretty bad for many, many years. It's had a new overlay over it many, many times, and in the recent past, it's getting worse, and it's starting to sink. And our engines, to an extent prior to doing foam jacking, would have to almost go up a curb-like dip into the fire station, which really caused me some consternation, because that would... The funny thing about the fire station is it's really, really old, and it has 10-foot doors. I can't go out and buy an engine off of the market standard, because it won't fit through our doors. They don't make them that small anymore in a four-wheel drive, they just don't do it. So any little bounce, we've got that much room to spare at the top. So that was making me nervous just in doing day-to-day business. But it makes me nervous that something else is going on down there, because maybe Jeff or somebody else would speak more professional about it than me. But when they did the foam jacking out front, they found a lot of porous surface under there that it just kept filling and filling and filling, and they just kind of were at a point where like, we're not sure we should do anymore. What's making that porous down there? I have no idea. But even after the foam jacking, that surface is still sinking and shifting. And if some of you folks who have been around it well know that if that manhole, the manhole that sits at the end of our alleyway in between City Hall and the fire department, that's a natural spring right there. So I don't know if there's water down there, I don't know if it's something that we're causing or whatever, but we need design and replacement of that apron out front of the fire station before we destroy equipment or even part of the facility, if it's a more major problem than that. To do that, Christine is leading that charge as well. Obviously, these things fall into planning, and right off the bat is we need to do some geo-stuff, which we're planning on doing this year, getting core samples of what's going on under the driveway and up at our training facility. And once we have good data on what's going on under there, we'll be able to design, come up with a design and a replacement for the driveway out front. As far as cost, as I talked a little bit about earlier, now I'll just expand on that. We just automatically reduced our fleet maintenance budget by $10,600. We did that simply because past councils and maybe some of you worked with us to provide fantastic apparatus, replacement of portions of our fleet, which are still under warranty now. And that being under warranty reduces our maintenance costs, the fact that they're late models reduces their maintenance costs. So I felt, just based upon this year's numbers, it's really easy to make that reduction and save some dollars there. The overall budget is lower by 28,200. Some of that is medical budget. We reduced the medical costs that we had by finding better ways to share costs for drug purchases that we need for response. So that's it. I thank you all very much. Look forward to anything that you may have to add or ask me. And outside of that, I guess it's up to parking now.
Thank you very much, chief. I appreciate that. We're going and we're getting close to 11:30, 11:25. I believe our lunch break was scheduled for 12 o'clock. We're correspondingly ahead. Denise, I'm thinking maybe now is a good time to take the lunch break, but what are the logistics here?
Yeah, we could take it. That lunch will not be served, will not be brought until noon, so it would give us an hour and a half lunch break, which people could get out and walk and do something like that if you would like. I'm not sure if parking moving forward would be beneficial right now. I'm not... No, Kevin says no, he needs a little bit more time, and I know the TMMP right after that is going to take longer. So maybe we need to go ahead and take the break and then come back at 1:00 as planned.
Yeah, I'm not sure we want to talk about parking on an empty stomach. Well, in that case...
I have a question. I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Julie.
Thank you. I was informed previously that there's no way for me to log on to this conference call we're having. I have to have it initiated by somebody else, and that's why I'm here. So my question is, is it safe to hang up and assume that someone's going to call me back a little before 1:00 to reconnect, or am I supposed to keep the phone, still on the phone?
They will call you back. We just got a, they're IT, we have an IT person here, so they'll call you back a little bit before 1:00, and we'll get back on, so you can take a break.
Okay. If there's no objections, then we can adjourn until 1:00. We'll have lunch here at noon. Okay, no objections? Okay. All right, we'll see you back here at 1:00. And Denise, do you need to give us any instructions relative to lunch?
No, we'll get lunch, and then we cannot eat in the facilities, so we'll need to go outside. I think it's warm enough or out in the little lobby area, but we cannot eat in here. So it will be delivered at 12:00, they'll be out front, and then you can pick up your lunch accordingly.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks to everyone who's participated, and we appreciate it. This is good information. Thank you. My apologies. We have the other three counselors online. Okay, so we have the other three counselors online. We'll resume our meeting. This is the Manitou Springs Budget Work Session, October 3, 2020. We're at Centennial Hall. We're continuing, it's 12:59. If the city clerk would call the roll, please.
Yes, Mayor. Counselor Susan Woolbrook?
Here.
Counselor Steve Brimner?
Here.
Counselor John Shada? Counselor John Shada?
Here. Counselor Steve Brimner?
Counselor John Shada?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Judith Chandler?
Present.
Counselors Julie Wolf?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nancy Fortune? And Mayor John Graham?
Present.
Okay, so the next topic is parking, and we've got Kevin Stevenson here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Mayor just said, my name's Kevin Stevenson, the parking manager for the city of Manitou Springs. Our vision is a little different than what is up on the PowerPoint currently. The vision for the parking department is to provide the best parking experience for the residents, visitors, and employees to Manitou Springs by offering an easy and seamless transition from finding the right parking space and paying for parking, thus improving the quality of life for all of our residents.
Kevin, can you bring this a little bit closer to you, just so we can all hear you? Thank you.
A little better?
Yes.
Okay. Going over the 2020 budget, this was more of an aspirational budget that was created by the Transportation and Parking Board of 823,750. The 2021 proposed budget is more of an operational realistic budget, what it would take to be able to run the department, of $559,690. Some of the ways that we were able to save money for the budget was, one, bringing the department in-house. That saved us, the city, an additional $36,000 in the outsourcing fee for SP+. It has also allowed the department to streamline some of its operations, and we've already seen reduced costs with restriping the Hiawatha Lot, Mansions Lot, and Wichita Lot. Just by being able to bring it in-house, we were able to do it a little more efficiently and faster. We have also shifted the entire cost of the 33 shuttle for the incline to the bar trail revenue lines. We've also reduced the professional services line by $100,000. Funding for this has been consolidated into all the capital improvement funds. Some departments, department accomplishments for 2020, obviously, the big one is bringing... Some departments, department accomplishments for 2020, obviously the big one is bringing the department in-house. As I stated prior, it has allowed us to streamline operations, we can run more efficiently, and we're getting a higher-quality staff that will give back to the City of Manitou Springs. Followed by that was the purchase, installation, and configuration of the Parking Logix system. The system is designed to display available parking spaces through a variety of methods throughout town. This can be done through the visible signs at each of the parking lots. The company also offers a link that goes on the city website to their website that will show the parker in advance if they know where they're going, the availability of a lot. It also integrates with all of the current programs and softwares that we use to ensure maximum efficiency. We still have a couple little configuration projects we need to do on that. Placement of the sensors in some of our driveways, it's causing it to not capture the vehicle as it enters or exits. We're in the process of getting some delineators to bring down that travel lane to ensure that the vehicles are going over the sensors to offer the most efficient count we can. Not only that, but this will allow us staff real-time availability to see what changes need to be made, whether it's by rates, times of use, or anything like that, because we're able to log in anytime and see the occupancy and use of each of the lots that has the system installed. It's going to be really great in the future when we decide that we need to change to more of an on-demand pricing, that we're able to make those changes in real time. The second major accomplishment is, again, this goes back to the removal of SP Plus. We've been able to customize the parking kiosks throughout town with a more personalized message from the City of Manitou Springs. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to stop by and check them out yet. We've updated the digital screen, display on the screens from the white background with the blue writing to a blue background with a yellow writing. It's easier for the eye to see what you're doing, to ensure you're actually getting the service that you're requiring, whether it's the 30-minute free option or the all-day option to pay for parking. By also doing this, as I stated, we were able to update the current message on it. Currently, the message says, "Welcome to historic Manitou Springs at the foot of Pike's Peak." It's more of a Manitou feel. It's way better than the corporate feeling that we had on there with SP Plus. It's more welcoming to our visitors and our employees. At the end of your transaction, there's an exit screen, which currently has a mask mandate reminder on there. That way, we can get this information out to the public as quickly as we needed to. It can be anything that we would like it to be and it's minutes to get it changed. Also, with all the kiosks and the COVID-19 crisis, we've been diligently cleaning the kiosks with disinfectant, the screens, the keypads, the receipt trays, all of that, at least three times a day, staff is able to do that without having to deal with other parking operation issues. We've also updated the software that was running the kiosks from SP Plus. With this new software, we are now able to better control the compliance that we're getting for the parking areas. A perfect example of this will be Lower Ruxton. It's a two-hour zone that was being notoriously abused because people were finding the loopholes and be able to pay additional parking and staff was not always available to monitor the area. By doing the update, we were able to limit the number of license plate transactions that can be entered into the machine for any given day, as well as limiting the amount of times a credit card can be used in a certain zone. This has greatly improved the efficiency of the two-hour zone on Lower Ruxton. Our complaints have been down. We still have a couple that are going over their time, but that's to be expected. We're not finding repeat transactions for the same license plate in that area. And again, finally, we have successfully transferred from SP Plus to the in-house operation. By doing this, we were able, as I stated before, to reduce costs, improve services, and implement changes to the parking operation in a more timely manner. One major improved service will be the utilization of the LPR system, as it's called in our office. It's the License Plate Recognition System. It's the cameras and the laptops that are on our patrol vehicle. Under SP Plus, there were strict safety guidelines that were limiting the numbers of officers allowed to use the program while it was in the vehicle. We had to have two officers in the vehicle to use that system, which would then deplete our efficiency on our foot patrols downtown to ensure all areas are being covered and customer services being given to people trying to figure out how to use the kiosks. We were slightly setback with the full deployment of that system. SP Plus collected the equipment by mistake at the end of the contract and we had about a four-week turnaround to receive the equipment back. Once the equipment is here, we have hired new staff and all staff will be thoroughly trained and this will, as I stated, greatly improve the efficiency of our enforcement.
Kevin, can you talk briefly about how that will also track stolen cars, et cetera?
Yes. So the LPR system is linked to a national database that all sheriff and police departments use throughout the country. If we have a stolen vehicle in Denver, Colorado, that's listed into that system and they make their way down to Manitou Springs, when that license plate is captured by our system, it will notify us immediately. And once we get that system fully operational, myself and Chief Churchill are going to work on a standard operating procedure for what parking staff needs to do and how to get to an officer to relay that information. It will also, if a judge wants somebody that bad off of a warrant, they will attach their license plate to that warrant. We will be able to find those people. It is attached for Amber Alerts, missing persons. It covers a whole plethora of areas that will greatly increase our efficiency as well as the police departments, because we will be working side-by-side to get those things to each other. One final accomplishment that we've done by bringing this in-house is standard parking did not have a preventative maintenance schedule set up for our patrol vehicle and we ran into this early this year, prior COVID-19, where a simple PM schedule for our patrol vehicle would have caught this issue and not ended up costing $1,000. We are now set up on a preventative maintenance schedule, partially through public services with our mechanic for the minor every couple-month oil change, tire rotations. And we're currently under the police department with that vehicle in their fleet, so it will be covered with the Manitou Springs auto contract. The parking goals for 2021, we are going to increase the accountability of our enforcement officers by implementing a daily and hourly log that will be reviewed weekly by management. This is going to ensure that we're covering all the areas that need to be covered. We're getting the information for citizen contacts, customer services, any vehicle complaints that are coming in. We are also going to assign staff to a designated foot patrol downtown. This will ensure at least one staff member in every section of downtown to cover that area. And by doing that, we'll be able to reduce wait time if we have a kiosk that's down, reduce wait time if we have a customer that puts their credit card in the bill acceptor, or any of those issues. It will also greatly improve the efficiency of our enforcement. Our second goal is we are going to acknowledge all parking complaints within 30 minutes during the hours of operation for parking staff. That was another problem we had with standard parking. They were very limited on their scope of service for enforcement staff hours. Moving to the city, we were able to expand that schedule a little bit and have staggered start times. So we're going to be beginning an hour earlier and possibly two hours later in 2021 to ensure that the residential areas are being patrolled, especially during the busy summer evenings that we have. Going back to the 30-minute hours of acknowledgements during the hours of operation, there's multiple ways to contact enforcement staff. Obviously, they can contact the parking office and then we can dispatch whoever's out on the street. We have implemented a cell phone number that has been publicized on the city's website and I have created business cards for the staff to hand out to various businesses, people around town that has the contact information. Should there be a parking issue arise, they have a number that they can call that somebody will answer. If they are currently busy and are unable to answer, that phone is to be checked every 15 minutes for voicemails, text messages, and emails and to ensure that they're responding promptly. We've also undertaken the See Click Fix transition, which staff has been utilizing vigilantly. We've received numerous complaints. It offers transparency and it shows me a timeline of how long it's taken my staff to get these issues acknowledged and completed. The third goal is to evaluate the outstanding citation collection process agencies and make any process improvement recommendations by May of 2021. Currently, we have over $300,000 in bad debt that our current citation vendor is not very aggressive, not aggressively attempting to collect. We've been in talks with a current vendor that the Parking Department uses to look at going to a more aggressive standpoint to collect that bad debt. By doing that, we are also going to try to utilize this vendor for other services, which will streamline our efficiency. It will put all of the parking operation under one operating system instead of having to go through three or four different systems. This will be more efficient for issuing a residential permit, a parking lot permit, issuing a citation, reviewing a citation, and the collections of the citations. This will also be a lot easier for staff if we have a technical issue. We're not having to jump through three or four different vendors to get the issue under control and get our operation back running. This will put us right with one vendor and we should have a timely response with any technical issues that we're having. And also by doing this, this will eliminate a lot of the wait time that our customers are currently having by having to go through several different systems to be able to issue a residential parking or parking lot permit. It will be under one system, which will then reduce the wait time as staff is not having to go through several different steps to get to the end result. And I believe that's all that I have and... Oh, yep, we have a slide here and that's going to move us over to... Yeah, we covered a lot of this in the opening under the budget. So that will move us into the TMMP that Deputy City Administrator Roy Cheney is going to cover.
Kevin, thank you very much. Roy, welcome to the podium.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council, and good afternoon. I hope you enjoyed your lunch. Can you hear me okay? So I get to, my next big challenge after the Incline is now mobility in Manitou. And I'm going to start using that word a lot more, Manitou mobility, because it's not just cars. And if we think cars, then we're going to think everything. How do we accommodate the car? So we need to think of the big picture. And today, there's a lot about mobility as a whole and that includes bikes, it includes walking, which I know we all need to do more of for health. And how do we do that in a safe way in Manitou Springs? And then, of course, providing parking for people, especially visitors who come out of town, need to do that. So the TMMP was a combination of all these different studies and they brought it together to figure out the best way to help with the mobility issues in Manitou Springs. That was late last year, it was approved that we move on with the TMMP. Since that time, it was through a Kim Lee Horn study and since that time, we have been given direction to move on with the TMMP implementation. Sorry. Did I touch that? And so we're going to, we were meeting before COVID hit and then COVID hit and we had to back off because of the many other tasks for the city. But we did start implementing some of these projects. And as Kevin mentioned, which by the way, I do want to give kudos to the parking staff because the move from SP Plus to in-house happened during COVID. Not easy since staff was moved out and we were all home. So we had to go through that process and basically only had two enforcers when we came back. Kevin was one of them. So besides trying to get a new department going, he was out there trying to patrol and enforce and do the citations and et cetera. So him and Patience were a two-person crew and again, tremendous job they did and now they're up to full staffing, which helps us, of course, again, with our mobility goals to have good enforcement out there. So I just want to make sure that they get their kudos on that task and they're going to make some great progress. The, once we resumed, I've been tasked now to resume the TMMP and we are starting doing that. We had a first quick meeting with staff that was part of the group towards the end before COVID and just trying to figure out what are the next steps and get back on track. So some of the things that we're going to start doing or have done is, and Kevin mentioned some of these too, this is going to be a little repeat, but the real-time communications and wayfinding. The TMMP recommended that we have a system in place where people will know the occupancy of the parking in the city. And so the Parking Logics is that system that they recommended. It was priced right, easy to install, but of course, there's always some tweaks we have to make based on our lots. But it will be attached to Park Mobile. It will be attached to a, we're looking at a new addition to the T2 kiosk system. So we'll have plenty of online capabilities of looking at the parking situation and for people to figure out what's going on before they start driving around Manitou Springs. And that's one of the key things with the automobile side of this. If they know what's available, maybe they don't cruise into town looking for it over and over and again. And it's funny because I'm on my fifth book. I came into this parking and mobility with very little knowledge except what I've done in my life, which was drive a car and drive all over a place, look for parking. So I have read five, or I'm on my fifth book right now and it's amazing the different ways that you can do things to help with that situation. And part of that is they talk about, more than one of the books, about parking karma that we all believe we have. Good luck. If I go my fifth time around, I'm going to find my parking spot. And with a lot of studies in other communities, they find, they actually had to put people on street corners and watch the cars traveling to find out how many are just doing a loop trying to find that magic spot. And it's amazing how many do that. There are not necessarily extra cars in town, it's just the same cars over and over again. And that's part of our problem in Manitou. So we're hoping with this real-time communication system and then the Wayfinder signs, which some of you on council, been on council for a couple of years, know that we put in place some signs for a test. We did find through the Transportation Parking Board that they were hard to read. There's a lot of information on these parking signs that are at the entrance off of 24 and then by the pool. So it wasn't really helpful to them because when you're driving by, you really can't read all the information and so people don't. So we are looking, Megan Weiss has taken on the wayfinding sign project here as we're moving forward. The colors, design, were all approved by council last year. And now we're just going to try to simplify it with the Transportation Parking Board's approval too, saying that if we can just simplify them and make them easier to read. So we're looking at how to do that and then dive into the pedestrian side of that because it's going to be important that when people park, they have to figure out where to go. And so that people get out of the vehicle, they, in Hiawatha parking lot, for example, they will be able to come to a sign and it'll tell them maybe there's a 10-minute walk into downtown or... And so we're going to work on that as well, which was also all approved on that sign. Different styles, again, the Transportation Parking Board, like the bullet-type style... Different styles, again, the transportation parking board, like the bullet-type style. So we're going to do a little bit of testing on that. We found that we can, with our sign-making capabilities now at Public Works, that we can probably do some and test out some of those walkability signs as well. And then, of course, we look into bikes and everything else, so that people know where they're going, how long it's going to take, and that's all part of that mobility side of it. So when we get people to the location, then they can figure out how to go to the next location without necessarily always driving there. The crosswalks. So that was approved. We ordered some flashing crosswalk signs, but COVID, again, just made everything stop. And I did find out that, from Jeff Jones, Public Works Director, that we are hopefully going to get them in next week. And then with, it might be perfect timing with the milling and paving of Manitou Avenue, that we can get the flashing signs up. We're also going to be putting state law signs in front of the crosswalks themselves. They will be freshly painted, so that's going to help. But that way, we can, people will see, it's state law number one to watch for the pedestrians. And it's a good way to, they also can be run over by the fire department if they have to get across, so it's no real damage. They flop over, you know, bend over. And if they get destroyed, the cost is not that bad. So we're going to do that for the pedestrian safety side. The other thing, we did a little pilot, if you noticed the flags in front of City Hall, and it's crosswalk flags, very inexpensive. And basically, they grab a flag, they kind of hold it up, and I know I've seen it, and Ms. Howell has seen it as well. People stop quickly when they see the flag. And I think it also just makes that area brighter with the pedestrian, you know, you can see it from all the way up downtown when I'm walking down, and I can see the flag. So it's helped just with overall visual of safety. But we still have issues with pedestrian safety. I experienced that just a couple days ago myself at the crosswalk. The truck did not slow down. If I would have just went out, I would not be here today. So we do have some things we got to work on with the pedestrian safety. If those flashing signs are work, we're going to do it by PATS, I believe, was the location. We're going to try it out. And I think, right now, we're looking at if they can be shut off at some point at night, and making sure that's legal, and still a safety issue, but, so it's not a flashing light in the middle of the night, not that we would get people at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning using it anyway, I guess. But we are going to continue on the crosswalks. The good news is that the, in Manitou, the pedestrian injuries are very low, based on the studies. So we don't have a lot of problems with that, even with congestion. And again, keep in mind that, you know, the congestion actually is probably traffic calming in a way, and slows everyone down when it is busy out there. So it has a little side benefit, even though it has a lot more negatives. Okay, Hiawatha, always a challenge with that area, but we've made some good progress. It has been milled and striped. We are, the parking board has agreed that charging for that area would be a good thing. So we are going to present that in a few weeks. To start, at this point, the recommendation would be April 1st. We do have kiosks already out there, that's used for incline management. We also need to take care of the building, and I know that there's been some direction on that now. So Laura Newman, a big part of the TMMP and the Hiawatha Project, is, at this point, helping with the Hiawatha Project right now, to get a task force and figure out removal of the nonhistoric sections, and how we're going to protect that historic building. And then we'll have to look at the mobility side of that area, including how we're going to do that by May. Because as you know, the cog reopens in May of next year, so it's going to be important we have a way for people to get to that area, be able to wait there comfortably, and then get up to the cog, or wherever they want to go. And so we're going to be working and focusing a lot on how we're going to make Hiawatha with a nice hub that will be effective. And keep in mind, there's been a lot of questions about the hub itself. It can be this fancy, big hub, or it can be something a little smaller. The PPRTA, based on Jeff Jones, what he told me about, their expectation is really what we want as a hub. But it has to be more than just a bus stop. So if we had a sheltered bus stop, if we had a bike racks, if we had some other mobility things, then that would be very helpful in that process of making it an actual mobility hub, and not just a, you know, a bus stop. So that's with that area, that's what we're focusing on. We do believe we can get some more parking space out there with some of that removal of part of that building, and looking at some other areas there that we might be able to shift around to improve the lot occupancy. That kind of ties into the incline management, which is real important, because with our initial structure of the reservation system, the idea is that we can dial up or dial down the reservation system. One of the things that Dole Grebenek, our city engineer and I, really liked about the reservation system was that ability. And what that means is, is that right now, we're finding that the morning is, of course, when people want to use the incline. And so the numbers are higher, and that's the nicest time, the weather's right, it's safer. As we go into the afternoon, is when it's hot anyway, and it's, you know, more hazardous to go up an incline, especially visitors who don't know what they're getting into. But we may have to limit that number, or even maybe we don't allow afternoon hiking up the incline. Because what we can do when we dial that down, and all I mean by that is reduce the reservations, or stop the reservation system in the afternoons, would be that it opens up the parking lot for more downtown folks, and Hiawatha specifically. And so then, we just push that group to the morning, where we found with already some of the Parking Logix data and visual data that we're getting, that there's some room in the morning. So we could do that just by that little trick, and it makes it easy for us to do some controls. So with that, with some additional parking ideas that we're looking at currently on Manitou Avenue, more east, and looking at even some other ideas downtown of whether it's parking benefit districts, which there's been some, I've talked to a few residents about protect, allowing some parking possibly in neighborhoods, but they get a benefit from that. So maybe it's just an employee-type thing, where they get to park there for a few spots. But so we're looking at some ways to do that, and to help manage the incline, and then, of course, when the cog comes in. So if we're able to control the, allow more incliners in the morning, and then control the afternoons, we open up space for the cog, we open up space for residents, we open up space for downtown shoppers, and that's kind of the key there. So that's what we're going to continue working on, the incline, along with Hiawatha, that whole connection. Ruxton Avenue, improvement design. So right now, a survey and right away delineations are being worked on. Again, Dole Grebenek, our engineer, is working on that. And it's going to be, take a while to go through that system, to get it all done, to get everything set in place for the actual work, which I believe the money is available in 2022, '23, to start doing some work up on Ruxton. The fact that we pulled off paid parking up there has been a benefit, I believe, to the area. I do get emails occasionally, statements, that it's helped a lot with the parking congestion up on Ruxton, as long, along with the Hiawatha parking and reservation system. So it's a combination effort there, but that's been a plus as well. The other big part, again, of the TMMP is going to be enhanced regional coordination. This past week, we went to Colorado Springs, talked to the mayor, and the chief of staff, and Scott Lee, who's the parking manager. And we discussed how we're going to work with our neighbors and the parking that we're affected with the incline, and even just Colorado Springs folks. They have been very open to our ideas and thoughts, and we're going to continue trying on a weekly basis for myself, Dole Grebenek, and possibly others as we go. We're going to meet with Scott Lee, we're going to try to get some ideas. He's one of the top parking managers in our area. I've talked to him before, a lot of good knowledge, and will be able to guide us in some things and ideas that I have, and Kevin has, or Dole. And we'll include, we got a great staff, and we'll include department heads as we need to in this project, because it's definitely not just a one- or two-person thing. So finally, the parking enterprise. So we are looking at some point to bring parking as an enterprise, just like our water enterprise. We feel that we're getting close to the possibility of doing that, so that it's self-sustaining. And it's real important, with all the studies I've looked at and books I've read, that parking, if we're going to charge for parking, which parking's never free, so we do have to, that has to be something that happens to help with turnover anyway, but if we're going to charge people, we need to make sure that we bring that money back to help with parking or and mobility. And again, it's real important that we remember the mobility side of this, and part of that's going to be looking at bike travel routes, it's going to be, but we have to have money to do things. So doing an enterprise is going to be important for that aspect of it. So we'll do that going into next year, and trying to figure out when to make that happen. So at the end, I'm excited to do the TMMP. I think it's the overall vision of mobility. There's still a lot of things to look at, and we just started it back up. In a few weeks, I'll be giving updates, and then there'll be continuous updates on where we're at, what we've accomplished, what we plan on doing in the future. And I'll just leave you with a little quote from Bruce Lee. Knowing is not enough, we must apply. Willing is not enough, we must do. And so I'm one of those people, as you know, with the incline or whatever, I'm going to do it. So if you give me direction, we will do what you need us to do and get the job done. And we're dedicated to help the citizens of Manitou, and to do the work that you need us to do. So I appreciate your time today, and now I would like to have Lynn Johnson come up from our new Parks and Recreation Department. Lynn, it's all yours.
Roy, just a point of clarification. Regarding the enterprise, we'll be bringing that back to you at some point to see if you agree to move in that direction, because that is a policy issue. But we need to do a lot of research, look at it, see what it takes, what that entails. So we will be bringing that to you, hopefully by June, July is what we're thinking at that timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roy, thank you very much. Okay, Lynn, welcome aboard.
Thank you. Nice to be here. Thank you for the intro, Roy. That makes things a little easier.
Lynn, can you put it down closer?
Oh, I'm so sorry. How's that? Good? Good. All right. Well, it's nice to be here, I have to say. I went to an events meeting the other day, and it was nice to even be talking about events, and the possibility to do things in person. And so it's nice to be here, it's a really nice facility as well. And on that note of being in person, and I would have to say, I've heard that the quote of the year was, "You're on mute." And I'm sure we've all been there, about three sentences into what we're saying. So this is actually really fun to see everybody in person. What I'd like to do is have you imagine for a moment being barefoot, and having your feet in the grass, taking a deep breath. Sounds like a nice place to be right now. We've all been here, and I'm grateful for all the colleagues that went before me, and I'm sure we're all ready to go out in the park and put our feet in the grass. And this year, I've heard that comment a few times from many people, the community, passerbyers, in meetings. You meet someone in the park, and they're like, "I just want to take my shoes off real quick. You've guys done such a great job." And I can't take all the credit, of course, I'm just here to, you know, be there for the team and guide them, and this was actually started with my predecessor, Jeff Jones, and I just picked it up. And we have such a great team, and they're so dedicated that the grass is just looking so beautiful, and it just made me think of how I would just like to go over there some days when I'm working, and it's hot out, and you got your boots on, and they're heavy, and I'd just want to go sit in the park and put my feet in the grass. And when you think of that, to me, it's calming, and you feel happier and lighter. And it was a nice place to go during COVID, being locked up and at home, and at first, it's kind of fun, you're like, "Oh, I get to work remotely." And it's like, you get to work, you start going back to work, and it's, "I forgot my mouse at home." All right, forget, okay, go back and forth. And so the parks, I felt, gave us a place of refuge from that, somewhat of a normalcy. And when you're out there, you know, there's many things that you'll experience, from the trees to the beaver, maybe hear the kids playing in the pool. And it all is very inviting, and I am so glad to be a part of this department. I started here in 2014 in the Streets Department, and I actually moved here in 2011, and I fell in love with the city right away, and I wanted to work for the city so bad. And I got my opportunity, and when I came on board, I said, "I want to learn everything about this city, and I want to make it to a place where I can really be a part of that change." And that's where I am today, with this new department, Parks and Recreation, that includes the Aquatic Center, and the Fitness Center, also GIS, and the Cemetery, which is one of my favorite places, by the way. It's very quiet, and beautiful, and historic, and I just love it there. So with that, I'd like to thank you for, you know, everything you've done, and your support and consideration, and everything that we're trying to do to make Manitou a better place. And we want to bring people here, and I think we're on our way there, even when you just look at the grass, you know? It's like, wow, I want to be there. And when you come through town, and visitors see it, and they're like, "Well, let's go lay in the grass for a minute." So while I'm here for a few minutes, I hope to cover the vision statement, some accomplishments that we've made this year, goals, and our 2021 budget highlights. With the story I told you, we already cover many of our vision statements with social equity. Everybody goes to the park. Everybody feels good being in the park. I mean, whether you're there for the beaver, the grass, the trees, to watch the kids playing, any of it.
Lynn, can you move the PowerPoint?
Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And so, you know, just when you talk about the parks, and when our Parks Department talks about the parks and our staff, what we do every day helps with our community in a healthy way, the environment. I mean, people want to come to the nice parks, so you're going to go to the doctor less if you're in the park. When the parks look nice, you're going to increase property values, and people want to come here. It just draws people to our city, and you can tell that our staff have been really committed to getting through this time of COVID with a shorter amount of staff. In our parks, you can see butterflies as well. We have Adopta Park, we work with Parib, Partners for Healthy Choices, Environmental Group, Tree Group. It's very inclusive of what our vision statement is. Excuse me. So we move into the Park and Recreation Department accomplishments. I have to say that this isn't a single accomplishment, because listening to everyone speak today, I've always known that we were one team, but listening to everybody, there isn't one person that came up here today, and we'll end the day this way, that I haven't worked with, or that hasn't helped me accomplish something, or I them. So... So accomplishments start with the city. And then we can break it down into the departments. I've seen our staff and colleagues be creative. COVID came aboard. We didn't know if we could keep people. I sat down with Jeff Jones. We sat down for hours trying to figure out a schedule to keep distancing and keep staff here. And although it's been difficult, I feel like it's really brought some people to the top and really dig down and see what you got to keep the city going. And I couldn't be prouder of the people that I'm working with because of what we've accomplished, not only as a department, but as a city. So with that being said, Park and Recreation Department was actually implemented on the Plan Manitou goal. And this includes the Aquatic Center and the Cemetery and our GIS Department. And with this, well, you'll say departure from Public Works, but merger with the pool, it's only strengthened our organizational chart. We've become more efficient and able to manage services for our community because we have a more focused and isolated concentration on this department. Some of the things we've done at the pool are major electrical upgrades. COVID shut us down for a little bit and the staff were bound and determined to get it back open because, like the parks, swimming in the pool makes you feel pretty good. And it's nice to get out there and feel like you can hear about floating. And so they were determined to get it open because they know what it means to the patrons. We were also a part of the See Click Fix and the Mobile 311 transition because we do GIS. And in that area, what we had to do, and it's just not me again or my department, we had to take all the Mobile 311 data from 2015 and archive it into spreadsheets and the pictures and make sure that all those files related for purposes such as code department needed to find a file. It took two or three departments, maybe even four, to work down, work together and pull in that data. It seems easy, but the computers don't pull data like that very quickly, but we did in about two or three days. And it was pretty impressive. Also in our Parks Department, before me, we brought the treatment of the parks in-house. And, you know, budgets were getting tight and we had a new organic land management plan to follow. And I can't say that the team wasn't nervous. It's a big, big, big task at hand. And at first, it seemed almost insurmountable to be able to make that happen. But if you go now and then look at the grass, you can see what they've done by following the OLM. And if you ever sit down with our Parks Lead, Chris, he is passionate about this. And they take pride in it. And so I couldn't be prouder. And I just get to stand up here and talk about it and give them kudos. But I have the best team that is dedicated. Since COVID started, we had to find creative ways to make it work. And when you go in the parks, you can see that. When you see the pool is open, you can see that as well. They did upgrade the sprinkler system in the Shriver Park and Memorial Park to take it out of the creek. And that was causing a lot of sediment to get caught in the filters. And it was a lot of maintenance, a lot of parts, a lot of labor, very, very costly. And once they switched it over the water, again, in collaboration with other departments, the filters look brand new if you pull them out. It's pretty amazing. The pool got a new reservation system and implemented Civic Rec. This is quite an accomplishment. It helps with the reservations. We can increase patrons. It's seamless, it's smooth, can track everything. You can really see where you're at. And it increases your ability to have more patrons and utilize every hour that we have that we're open. The Parks Staff, I mean, the Pool Staff and the Parks helped with social distancing during COVID. It was very appreciative as we did have some issues with the incline and they sat up there and just reminded people to, you know, be mindful. And they enjoyed being out there. And while they were social distancing ambassadors, they also helped in the parks at the same time. And so although the pool was closed, we also utilized them in our area and for the city. This year, we managed without any seasonal staff for the first time in history. And that's about five to seven staff. And that's quite a bit. We actually ran most of the summer with about two or three Parks Staff. And they never gave up. They were bound and determined to make it work. And at times, they didn't even want to go on vacation because they didn't want to leave their colleagues to fend out in the field. And I can't say enough about their dedication. At first, it was hard, maybe some complaints about not having enough staff. And then it turned around into, how can we make this work? Also this year, I'm very excited to say that we had our first green burial. It was implemented, you know, we started talking about in 2017 and 18 and making the maps in the cemetery. So you have areas where there's going to be trees and then the green burials are right by the trees. And we had a call from a funeral home and they were so excited. They said they had so much trouble trying to find a place that did green burials. And they wanted to call the Pike's Peak Bulletin because they were ecstatic to be able to tell the family that we offered this. And we've had other families come in finding plots, cremation sites. And once we start talking about green burials in the maps, they're like, "Oh, so I can have a green burial and I can be by a tree." And they are talking about, "I can give back to the earth." And it's pretty exciting. So those are some of our big accomplishments. You know, we can name them, but in the end, it comes down to their spirit, their drive. And sometimes you can really see what a team or a city is made of when they're under pressure. And I couldn't be prouder of the people I work with. So our goals. So we're trying to establish some ownership in the parks. Our team has already taken some, but it was brought to me to see if they wanted to put their name on the park. And I thought, okay, they might like this because they already put their names on the lawnmowers and they put their names on the weed eaters and they take care of their weed eater and they take care of their lawnmower. So it only made sense when I said to them, "Do you want to own a park?" And they said, "Yes, because this is mine and my name is on it." And we're very excited about that. And that's also going to spread over into the pool Aquatic Center. They're going to step up and try and get maybe a perimeter of the pool that they'll take ownership for and have their name on it. We have our swim team that's already increased by 15%. And we have a swim coach and the director over there diligently punching numbers and scenarios of how can we increase this? Not only the pool swim team, but our attendance overall. I had a resident approach me who had a medical issue and asked me, "When were you going to have the aerobics back up?" Because a year ago, they didn't think they would walk again. And they said swimming at the pool is what made a difference. And they wanted to keep pushing harder. And they said, "Can you get that fitness program back up?" And I was like, "Are you kidding me? I'm so happy you're walking." Yeah, yeah. So, you know, we got our leaders over there really trying to work that out and get that back in there because I believe that's something we can offer and, you know, maintain the COVID, social distancing and masks and whatnot. And if it promotes that kind of benefit, our team is going to give their best to make that work. The Cemetery. I don't know if everyone was here a few years ago. We tried to contract out a software company to digitize the cemetery. The cemetery is very old and it is very tedious and you think it goes A, B, C, D, and it goes the other way. And it takes some practice and study and drive to want to find a headstone there because we have like three books. And one has a deed, one has a plot book map, and they used to write in it. Well, we tried to hire a company and they, when they came back with their product, they had over a thousand anomalies. And we're like, "Well, you know what? Maybe we should do this because we know it. We're there every day. We understand it and that's what we're going to do." We have a team that I've been working with that, like two weeks ago, they wouldn't have been able to find a headstone. And just this last week, I had two people go out and they found it by themselves. And so I was very excited about that. It just takes a little time, but with what we know, I know we can bring that in-house and that's going to save a considerable amount of money. All right. Parks and Recreation Budget Highlights. Well, as I mentioned before, we're a new department. We didn't exist. And this is the best idea, in my opinion. We're keeping the budget separate because they both, they allocate differently and they're very, it's good to keep track of it. That's something you want to know, the attendance, the revenue, what we're spending, what we're saving. And so with that merger, we have taken the maintenance and instead of calling the contractor right away, we called the Parks Department and say, "Hey, can you guys come over and take a look at this? Give me your opinion." And that's already saved a few phone calls and a lot of money because we have such experienced long-term staff that they can take a $5,000-plus-dollar project and go buy a $25 park and a little bit of labor and then we're fixed. So that, as far as budgeting goes and merging, is quite the accomplishment. The treatment we brought in-house with, you know, like I mentioned earlier, the OLM, we couldn't afford to keep everybody in the gardening. And so the guys and the gals, really, at first, it was a struggle. But once they started to see what they could do and once they put their minds to it and their dedication and the results they were getting, the difference from 2019 to 2020 is pretty amazing. I understand we didn't have a lot of foot traffic because of COVID, but I can tell you, our Parks Lead has an insurmountable amount of records to show you what they've been doing and the cost savings. And just sitting down and talking to both the pool and Parks Department, I learned so much about what they know and how dedicated they are and the records they've been keeping. And I'm very excited to know we have people like that on our team and the future looks really good because they're already talking about where else they can save. And it's nothing on my, I haven't given them any rewards or, you know, bonuses. It's going out to the park and hearing people say, "I want to put my feet in the grass and this is amazing." And so it's all in their own. We also took the pool management team is going to do a little more lifeguarding. We had to pull one staff out and put them in the Parks Department for the budget. We had to save some money somewhere, but we had opening in the parks and they came over and filled that. And we still left that position open, but we're not going to fill it. So we're saving some money there. The pool has a new cost, however, of the swim team coming in and managing that. But in the end, it's over, it's going to be, sometimes, you know how they say, "You have to spend a little money to make a little money." And in the beginning, it might seem like, boy, that's a lot. But in the end, what we're doing, not only financially, but just emotionally and camaraderie is priceless, really. And then again, with the, we had a pool leak and I was pretty nervous that it was leaking a lot of water. And we had a team member want to take a look at it. And like I said, he took with a few other people some time to look at it. And time and labor and $25 park and it hasn't leaked. So that's, you know, sometimes there's no words for that kind of dedication. So in the end, I thank you for your time. I hope that you learned something or you got excited about something. We're committed to our vision and the accomplishments we've already had are driving us for our goals to next year. And I'm looking forward to have more highlights. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Lynn. Great. Looks like we're about on schedule here. We, our agenda calls for a 10-minute break. So if there's no objection, I guess we could take a 10-minute break. You agree with that? Okay. So I've got 1:57. Let's plan on being back at 2:07, okay? And when we reconvene, we'll touch base with the remote council members to make sure they're online. Okay, thank you. Moving back, please, to reconvene.
Mayor, before we start with Public Works, I'd like to make a few comments about parks, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Denise, go ahead.
Are we back?
Well, let's see. Actually, we need to, we need Susan and we want to check in with the three remote counselors, make sure they're available. Let's do that and then Denise, you can make your remarks. And if we could check with IT, we have three remote counselors. We'd like to verify that they're all available, all three of them. Okay, good. We get the heads up on that. I believe we have everyone. Denise?
I just want to make a few comments regarding parks. Yeah, they've done a phenomenal job without any seasonal this year, which has been a lot of hard work. The other thing is, is the parks look better than ever. And there is some, or a lot of truth to the fact that there is not as many events and those type of things. But it's also because they've checked all the sprinkler systems, they have a new watering system in place, and they did the holistic gardening from the very beginning and made sure all the treatments were on. So there is a variety of reasons and I just want to give them the credit for that as they manage through that. And it really does a lot to do with the sprinkler systems that were not working correctly last year. So good job. Oh, the other thing I do want to mention in the budget, we did take one person from the pool and they've moved over to parks, but we've still kept that in the budget as funded because once the Aquatic Center gets up to speed and they start getting more people, we'll need that position back due to the rules and regulations. But it just gave us a little bit of freedom right now to do that.
Thank you, Denise. Jeff, it's all yours.
Well, good afternoon. Denise said they saved the best for last, but I think she was just trying to appease me so I wouldn't complain. I'm pretty sure. I would like to tell Lynn that just a few minutes ago, I did take my shoes off and run through the grass.
Well, did you?
Yes, it was quite enjoyable. I just want you to know that. So good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm Jeff Jones, your Public Works Director. And what I'll be doing up here today would be briefing you on the Public Works Department budget, vision statement, accomplishments, 2021 goals, and capital improvement programs. Then Becca will come up, I believe, and then I'll return later and I'll be briefing you on the Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Okay? So I will be batting cleanup at that, at that point. I would just like to point out a couple of things or reiterate that a couple of other managers that talked about, Brian and John, had talked about interaction with the community and how paramount that is. And that goes the same with our department as well. We interact with the community on a daily basis. And what we provide is tangible visual results that people can see, that people can touch. Okay? It's very important. And we do that through operational services that we provide every day as well as project execution, which they can see. Now, some of these projects may take a while. They're large projects, you know, if you're talking about Ruxton, if you're talking about MAPS project, Creek Walk Trail, I go on and on and on. But at the end, there's a little bit of heartache of putting people out because it's inconvenient. But at the end, what they get out of it, they're very appreciative of it. And it's a big, it's a big deal, the projects are. And also, and how do we accomplish this, and I'm going to hit on what Lynn said, is that we have outstanding and flexible staff that are willing to go extra mile when needed. And I'll go into some detail of how we did that here in a little bit, of their flexibility and willing to do what needs to be done in order to get there. So first, I'd like to go through our vision statement. So our vision statement for Public Works is that Public Works employees deliver cost-effective, safe, reliable, and sustainable projects, programs, and quality services. safe, reliable, and sustainable projects, programs, and quality services with a focus on our community, and provide support services that are competitive, attentive, responsive, efficient, and safe. All our employees will be empowered through strong servant leadership. And I think that's very important, that you allow the people that you trust to make some decisions, but some of those decisions need to go with checks and balances. As we like to say, and Roy, we've talked about this all the time, is to trust but verify. But you have to trust your folks. If you can't trust your folks, then you need to replace your folks. It's very important. So we give them that leeway. On our budget, from the 2020 original budget of $1,700,000, we have reduced it for a proposed 2021 budget of $1.268,273. And I'll go into detail why that is later on. Okay, so Public Works accomplishments. Now, there's a lot of accomplishments. I could go into. Not enough time today to talk about all of them. Because in all reality, everything that happens in the city, Public Works touches. And we help out a lot of departments, and they help us out tremendously, too. Don't get me wrong. But at the end of the day, there's always going to be need for Public Works, and we're willing to go the extra mile to make sure that takes place as well. So some of our accomplishments are sidewalk replacement. We replaced four sections of sidewalk, either by jackhammering them out or grinding them down to where they weren't, to where people would trip up, make them ADA compliant. We also completed 362 facility work orders last year. One big thing we've been doing, and we're still doing this, is disinfecting of all public facilities at least three times a day since March. We've been doing that from day one. As soon as we went into the COVID scare, Denise requested it, and we're making sure it's taking place. They were giving clean and facilities not only for the public, but also for the people who work for the city. Very important. We've installed about 114 signs, give or take, various sizes, various locations, that had to do with the COVID-related issues. We discovered real quickly that there was a problem with a non-existent hydrant flushing testing program. So we have taken that in very, very serious. And to date, we have a contractor in right now, and we've done about 102 hydrant flushes right now. And we have a very high-speed new water sewer superintendent who has experience with a hydrant flushing program where he came from. He's going to take that underneath his wing, and we're going to take that on in-house to make sure we have the proper firefighting capabilities. We've repaired about 158 potholes. We've done various 50 street cut traffic management requests, processes that come through, that come through Christine's section. And that's probably on the light side. I think it's more than that, actually, because there's always requests that the public's putting in through planning. We've repaired 13 water main and sewer line breaks, and I'm sure you've seen all of those. There's always something going on with our old infrastructure that we have. But we take that very serious as we do everything else. But that seems to be our number-one thing that goes wrong, is the breaks within our old clay water and sewer systems. Happens all the time. We've done nine street repairs performed. Those are various street repairs, curb, gutter, aprons, approaches, and stuff like that that we've repaired. And we've done this, as I believe Denise said earlier this morning, we've done that when we were down five staff members, okay? So we adapted, we overcame, we adjusted fire, and we did what needed to be done, okay? We also, in order to have full coverage, we, what I did was Lynn and I had sat down, and we talked about splitting up our staff. And we wanted to do that by having full coverage seven days a week. So we did that by having four 10-hour days. We had a crew that worked Sunday through Wednesday, and a crew that came in Wednesday through Saturday. Full seven-day coverage, 10-hour days, 40 hours a week. Cut down on overtime. You save a lot of money by doing that, okay? It's very important that we did that. Now we're back. Since the winter months are here, we can't do that and run a snow removal crew. So now we're back to our regular Monday through Friday. You can't run three shifts that way. All right, some Public Works budget highlights. That top number there, the, that actually should be a comma after the 1, that $1,900,000, that was the original budget, 19. But we have reduced since that time, that was the ending budget, 19. We have, since that time, reduced our budget to 2021, down to $1,200,000. And the reason for that is that this includes the count line histories that had been moved over to Parks and Recreation. So original Parks and Recreation folks, insurance, pay scale, the budget line, all that was in Public Works. It's now moved over to Lynn, and that's why we come up with that number, and we've reduced it by that much. So we're not actually reducing any services. That's just been moved over, okay? We're still providing the same quality services we were before. Trash removal has increased to about $11,000, and that's due to a 3% to 5% increase on services each year over an old four-year contract. That's why we're up a little bit now, just the price of doing business, unfortunately. Same with street materials, up about $15,000. That's due mainly to COVID-related issues of running the batch plants in order to get all of the asphalt that you need. It's just more expensive now, okay? But we have decreased our overall building maintenance, our facilities, by $10,000 due to no major projects being required during the time. And we're doing pretty good, at least on that aspect of it.
Jeff, can you stay close to the mic, or else we can't hear you. So when you step back, it's hard to hear. Thank you.
I'm sorry, one of those walkers.
Nope, you're great.
Bye-bye. Okay, so we'll go into a few accomplishments. Is this better? Can you hear me a little bit better now? Okay, so we'll go into a few of the accomplishments. And there's a lot, but I like to attach pictures to everything because I think that speaks thousand words when you can visually see it as well, okay? So milling overlay, which I'm very proud of, we pushed it back a couple of times, but it does start Monday, the day after tomorrow. So we are milling. Got a company hired, Trax Construction. That's a $200,330 project that's starting tomorrow, or excuse me, Monday. And they will be milling the westbound lane. We have Kevin and his crew coming in with some of my guys. And we're going to block off the lanes of the westbound side on Sunday night at about 5:00 PM. It's a big undertaking, and I believe Denise said earlier, it hasn't been paved in maybe 15 years, thereabout. And that's true. We did do some repairs on one little section of it where it was sinking. But now we're going to get a nice milling overlay that should last and be beautiful for everyone. It'll be a little heavy, loaded up front. You know, the traffic will be bad, deliveries will be bad a little bit. But after we're through it, everyone was going to get a good quality conduit to drive the conduit, or roadway to drive their vehicles through. Let's see. And then we got that money, obviously, through Pike's Peak Rural Transportation, PPRTA. All right, Pedestrian Spa Bridge. So John spoke a little bit earlier about foam jacking at the fire department. So what we did, we hired a company, and this was Dole's ideal, and he has several good ideals, by the way. We hired a company that he used prior, when he worked for CDOT. And what they provide is foam jacking. And what foam jacking is, if you have a void underneath a pavement, a concrete, or a house, sidewalk, whatever, they inject this foam in an expanse. And it's almost like the foam that you put around your windows when you're building a house, and it expands. But this is much more industrial. So we did that to stabilize a void that was underneath the spa bridge at one, at one place. And it did stabilize the void. And then we had mason contractors come in, agave, come in and repair the arch. I don't know if y'all have seen it lately or noticed it, but it looks great. They did a super-good job on it. It looks a little new right now because the, the part of the concrete is not cured and is not aged as much. But it's, it looks, they did a fantastic job, really did. Next one is water treatment plant. We have that project going. That is actually a three-part. So we have water filter number one being replaced right now. And then we have stage two, which would be water filter number two, then stage three, which would be water filter number three. So stage one right now, the cost is $224,000. Glacier Construction got that. And what that does, it eliminates the need for gravel support and surface washers and new instrument insulation, allowing for operation of existing components using up-to-date filter-level technology, thus providing the ultimate goal of pure water, better water for everyone in Manitou. Clark's Lee Road and Mountain View Sanitary and Water Main Replacement. Big project, very much needed. When I first got here, a little over a year ago, the first thing I heard about was all the backups that were happening on Clark's Lee. Mountain View, especially with the sewer, huge, huge, huge problem. It all had to do with sloping problems. It all had to do with oil piping. It all had to do with just bad infrastructure that we were providing up there. So what we've done, and Becca mentioned this earlier, is we have a loan from the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority, where we're going to spend $546,000 on the sewer portion, then $546,000 on the water portion up there, okay? And what that's going to provide us is a many, many years of stability of the right sloping of the sewer. Because right now, the sloping that goes down Dunida was totally off, and it was running back toward the end of Clark's Lee. And that was one of the major problems. So we're going to get that squared away. And that project is due probably to kick off, and we already have a contractor went through the bidding process and approved. And that'll probably be end of this month, I would say. A little delayed than what we originally planned, but it's going to be worth getting the proper, you know, getting everything arranged properly to get this done right. Because we want to do it once and do it right. Public Works Facility. Okay, this is one of my favorites. Why? Because I worked there. Number one, and we all do. Number two is that originally, the cost was $1,000,000, which is on here. And that was to do Building A and Building B. The reason we can't spend $1,000,000 is because we don't have $1,000,000. So what we do have is half a million dollars. So what we're going to do is we're going to spend about $500,000 and do Building A. And that's going to be our main, the main building area up there. So unprecedented, I, John Merritt, and I'll give him credit, he came up with an ideal. He and I were sitting around talking one day when he was here. And he said, what about getting this building taken care of? You guys need a good place to work out in order to provide good services. I said, John, you're right. We do. I said, how you think we go about that? He goes, PPRTA. I said, oh, John, they're never going to approve that. So, because they don't approve maintenance money for buildings, for structures. They'll approve it all day long for trails, bridges, roads, right? So I wrote up a big long letter and a memo and gave it to Rick down at the PPRTA, and he goes, give it a try. So I did. And when I went to brief in front of the CAC, they voted against it. I said, ah. But Rick said, don't, don't lose heart, because they're not the final deciding. It goes to the formal board. So I went back to the formal board. I changed some of my wording, changed a few things. Went up there and they approved it unanimously, I believe it was. I think you were there, Roy. Very excited about it. So they gave us $350,000 from PPRTA funds in order to improve that facility. And then we also had about 158, that was earmarked for that in our capital improvement program. So that, by the way, is also taking place. We just found out they got their permits and their asbestos approval back from Pike's Peak Regional. This project starts the 22nd of this month. So we'll have a lot going on this month, starting this month. But it's exciting times. We all get to live in the trailer out there and use porta-potties. Everyone's pretty excited about that, let me tell you, especially with the winter coming on. Which, okay, I'm going to, these parking lots, I won't dwell on these too long, but they are important. And I'm going to tell you why. This is what Kevin mentioned earlier. It looks like the Wichita parking lot and some of the other ones we approved with the Metro District. It all goes along with the transportation that we're talking about. So this only costs $6,000, but it was a big win, talking about the partnership with the Metro District and what we did there. Put up new signs for handicap. We seal coated, we striped it, we did the whole nine yards. I had a real good company, which I will use again, that did several of these. And by doing that, it extends the life of the parking lot quite a bit. Hallowa the Gardens, another huge one, because we know this is directly tied to the use of the incline. So we cracked seal, the same company, I had them crack seal, seal coat it, re-stripe it. And it was at a decent, really decent, reasonable price. We're going to add a few more parking spots on the backside to give us a few more, a little bit more room for cars to park there. But I thought they did a fantastic job. And also, Kevin and his group installed some kiosks out there that you get a ticket from when you're going up toward the incline. And eventually, hopefully, that at a reasonable rate, we'll be charging some prices for it so it can pay for itself here real soon. Rock Hill Paving. The reason I put this one on here, people are like, Rock Hill? What'd you put that on there for? That's nothing, is because the folks that live up that hill, and it's a very steep incline, had many promises made to them years ago that never came true. And their, their road was washing out extremely bad. So I made it a priority after looking at it, and it was really bad. And we took care of that and had a company come up there and do some, some extensive groundwork. And I believe this was Trax Construction, too. And stability, and also put a pan across there where the water runoff was really washing through at one of the gentleman's yard, one of the homeowners there. And it made them extremely happy. Not only that, but it was extremely needed for our infrastructure because it was affecting more than that, just that road. It was washing down many, not many, but U-trail down through there, and large, large chunks of rock. And I think, you know, I'm afraid someone's going to ride a bike through there or something, and it's going to hurt themselves. So that's a big win, I thought. And plus, we won some hearts in the community with that one. Restriping Crystal Hills Road and Crystal Park Road. We had some money left on a contract for restriping with Kirby. Yeah, with Kirby Striping Company out of Castle Rock. I said, let's don't let it sit there. Let's use it. Let's improve it. So we went all the way from Manitou Avenue and Crystal Hills Road all the way up to the stop sign, back around to Crystal Park Road, all the way back down to Manitou. We did center stripe there for everybody because it was very faded. Another win. City Hall Parking Lot. This didn't cost much because what I did is I bundled it. I got a bundled deal, like, you know, you do your cable with the other parking lots. It only cost a little over $1,000 to do. But it drastically improved the look of the parking lot at City Hall and the usability, and it made a safe and reliable area for our city employees. And I'm sorry, we did increase the parking there, too. So everyone we looked at before we did this is that we made sure that we looked at increasing the parking positions, too, in there. All right. That's just a few highlights I wanted to go through. Now we'll go to Public Work Goals for 2020. I put my glasses because I can't see now. Okay, so Public Work Goals is to provide reliable and continuous service by completing 75% of see, click, fix work orders within 14 calendar days. That's tough to do, but that's still a goal. Because if goals are easy, then we'd all make our goals, right? And the reason we're doing that is because we're setting the bar high, is we want to achieve that. If we can get close to that, I'd be thrilled. But it's very tough. Because with see, click, fix, great program, great for tracking things. But with public access, there's a lot that's put in. Now, you can't just say, well, somebody put this in, it doesn't mean anything. You have to go check out everything. It's very important, okay? Because otherwise, they wouldn't put the time to put it in. So we look at it, we, you know, do what we need to do far as planning on it. Do we, we go out and take a look at it? Is there a way ahead on it? Do we have the money for it? Can we put it off? But what we always do, where we plan on doing it then or later, is to talk to the customer and let them know what our plan is and why. And that goes a long way. That's what we want to do. Also, our goal is to replace three water and sewer infrastructure systems. And that could be small, it could be a large area. Sometimes it is relying upon when the breaks happen and occur, and that determines what we're going to do. But we want to do at least three. And I believe that Eddie, our new water and sewer superintendent, is coming up. He's going to have a good program of how they're going to get there and maybe exceed that program. We also want to complete seven capital improvements projects in 2021 calendar year. That's, that's a pretty big goal, too. And I'll go over those here shortly. There's some big ones, but we, at least we want to get as far down the road as we can with these. It's going to make a major impact on the city as well. And of course, we want to provide safe, clean water for our residents and our visitors by adhering to El Paso County requirements from the Health Department. Very important. We test our water every month. We make sure it's where it needs to be, chlorinated the right way. We send it off to El Paso County for them to test it and to give us the approval. And then we document it, and we say that we have good water there. We have a lot of water breaks, but we have really extremely good water there. All right, capital projects. So we'll go through, we'll go through these. And we're going to try to accomplish, like I said, as many of these as possible. Now, these are in various stages right now. So Ruxton Corridor, to give an example. Ruxton is, we have a consultant, the consultant is about 75% complete with topographical survey and has begun working on the right-of-way delineation on that. And that is funded by PPACG. And that is funded by PPACG, the TIP, Transportation Improvement Program grant, as well as the capital improvement program. Creek Walk Trail. Creek Walk Trail is, final plans have been sent to CDOT to begin the right-of-way and environmental clearance process, and that is for Phase Three. Phase Three of the Creek Walk Trail runs from the back of the pool and it goes to Chamber of Commerce, okay, for Phase Three. So that's where we're at with that. City Hall Upgrade, HVAC. So they have discontinued the use of R22 coolant, which is the coolant that is currently in our units there at City Hall. So I had a contractor come out and I asked him, "Do we have to replace these whole units because we can't use that coolant? Or can we replace some of the components that are in these?" And he said, "Yes." So the answer was, R22 is no longer going to be available, so you have to do something. So it's either replace the whole unit or just replace like the compressor and a few other components. So he got called out on emergency, so I don't have a price yet, but it's going to be lower than that $122,000, guaranteed. If we were having to replace units, that's about what that would cost. So that's, that's going to be a win for us once I get that. We'll move ahead with that. Pedestrian Bridge Improvements, these, we're going to use some $25,000 is what I got funded. We're going to make some improvements with our agave stonemason on some of those. Soda Springs Park, we're about 90% plant, let's see, plants are 90% are ready and are being reviewed this month. So we're really close on Soda Springs. We're finalizing with the topographical and design on that too. And that is a GOCO fund, and this, I think this one's been in the works since, I want to say 2016 or 15, something like that, right? It's been a long time. So we want to get that one. Dole and I are working on that one, get that where it needs to be. And like I said, that's a GOCO Greater Outdoors Fund with a city match of $63,000 plus a small amount of in-kind labor that we'll have to do too. All right. Parks Facility and Master Plan. That one we just got awarded to a company called Cushing and Terrell. That is a DOLA, Department of Local Affairs, and it's a 50-50. So it's $150,000 from DOLA grant, $50,000 from us. And we also have, I'm sorry, yeah, and that's it. It's a 50-50. So what we have was, we had a meeting with them already, the kickoff meeting. We gave them direction that we wanted, myself, Lynn was there, Crystal was there, I can't remember who else. But we gave them the direction that we want to go in. And what that is, is more greener for our parks, our facilities, is more energy efficient. We want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the City of Manitou Springs as well as for the environment. So we're trying to be much more environmentally friendly. We push that to them. We want that on the forefront of, we want sustainability, but we also want environment-friendly. Very important. Fiber Optic Improvement with Broadband. Dole is working with HR Green and John Merritt on that. I don't have any updates right now where they're at. That's going to take a little bit more planning on the fiber optic, but we have put $50,000 toward it so HR Green can continue their efforts on that. Downtown Improvements. We want to use that $20,000 to make some ADA improvements on some of the bathrooms in downtown area, which they need it, just because they have a lot of visitors, and of course, the visitors got to go to the restroom. So we want to make sure it's compliant that everyone can go to the restroom, not just those who don't need ADA ways to get in the bathroom. Becker's Bridge Replacement. Well, that's a, that's a hot item here lately. There's the Urban URA, Urban Renewal, and Karen Berthold is working that right now with getting another meeting together with public involvement and so on and so forth. Got some more here, don't I? Okay. These are the easier ones. Let's go here with these. We are also requesting in the budget $66,000 for a four-by-four truck. We're going to use that for asphalt placement as well as snow and sander. We're going to use it for a snow removal as a dual-purpose vehicle. We're also asking for a $50,000 single cab F-2500 truck, because our fleet is aging just as bad as our sewer and water infrastructure. Maps Project. Decided about Maps Project. Just got off the phone yesterday. Dole and I talked for a long time about Maps, about getting, we just got approval from CDOT in order to have that publicized for bidding. So that's going to kick off pretty soon. And where we're at on Maps is, it was advertised on, actually, it's going to be advertised, and we're going to have a pre-bid meeting on October the 7th. And then we're going to open it up for 16th for bids, and we're expecting after that, construction will be starting four to five weeks after that. So we are going to have projects that are going to be running out of our ears starting end of this month, next month, and it's going to be big dollar projects, and there's going to be a lot going on. But we like to be busy. All right. Let me see that. Okay. I believe that's the end of this portion of my presentation, and I believe that Becca is next, and then she'll let me come back up here later and finish up. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Welcome back, Becca.
I want to mention one thing that Jeff, with going to PPACG and getting funding for that building, I think it's the first time in PPACG's history that they ever gave funding for a building. So Jeff did a phenomenal job fighting for that and making sure that his staff is taken care of. So good job, Jeff.
Okay. So once again, I'm Rebecca Davis, the Finance Director, and we are almost to the end of the General Fund. Although Jeff did talk about some projects from the water sewer, storm drainage funds also, but everything we've been covering today, basically, General Fund. That's the operating fund of the city. There's a few lines left, and they come at the end of the General Fund, and they're not under a particular department. Okay, let's start. First off, there's the Economic Development and Promotion area, and that covers the URA sales tax increment, which is budgeted for $1,430,000 in 2021. Business Promotion and Tourism, this is money that's been set aside in our code for attracting visitors and/or business activity to the city. And this was talked about earlier in the presentation. We generally give the money to the Chamber of Commerce. They've asked for $409,000 and, or they will be asking $409,000 when they come and present on, I think, November 10th, and that is what the staff is recommending. Also in that area is $15,000 set aside for holiday lights. In the past, the city has allocated $30,000, but in the past couple of years, it's been cut in half. Next after that is Intergovernmental and Miscellaneous Programs. The first one is the Municipal Programs Donations. Thirty-five of that, $35,000 of that is for the school district, for their partners for healthy choices, and that was mentioned earlier by our city administrator. And then $2,500 for the Golden Circle Nutrition Program, which is held at the St. Andrews Church for seniors, and it's hosted by the Silver Key Foundation, and the city has contributed to this program for over 20 years. After that, we've got the Regional Intergovernmental Support. That's for three separate entities. There's the Fountain Creek Watershed District for $1,300, and they are known for five main areas. It's a board. Their, their main purposes are to mitigate flooding, erosion, and sedimentation. They address water quality issues, improve drainage, protect open space, and develop public recreational opportunities. Then we have the Green City Coalition for $2,300, and their slogan is Communicate, Collaborate, and Celebrate Green. They're known for communicating with the community the promise of embracing sustainable actions in our environment and with one another. Finally, there is the Compact of Colorado Communities, $1,200. Their slogan is People, Power, Purpose. And they're for building Colorado communities' capacity for climate action. Then finally, we've got $2,744 for the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments, which does a lot of good in this area. Oops. I went backwards. Okay. Then more of our general phenomenon, none, ooh, excuse me, I'm getting so tired. I hope you forgive me. We have a transfer out to other funds, to the Capital Improvement Fund, $500,000. The Capital Improvement Fund has a mill levy approximately of half a mil, and a mil is about $70,000. So they're getting about, I think, $39,000. It's a little over half a mil. So extra funding to honor our commitments in the Capital Improvement Fund comes from either grant matches and to cover the lease purchases debt, and it has to come from the General Fund, which we do by transfer. And then finally, we have committed and assigned expenditures, which is way at the back of the General Fund. And these are for expenditures related to funding tied to a specific purpose. So there's two types, really. There's the committed revenues and expenditures, which are commitments by city council. For instance, the Bar Trail revenues are dedicated to improving the Ruxton Corridor and surrounding trail areas, which city council created through an IGA with the Colorado Springs Utilities. This is where the funding for Shuttle 33 comes from, and also the city's annual donations to the Rocky Mountain Field Institute to perform work on Bar Trail. Assigned is committed light. And by that, I mean that city council appoints an individual to make assignments of revenues and expenditures to separate fund balances within the General Fund, and in this case, that individual is myself. The main assignments I have done is for donations. If a citizen donates money to the police department, that goes into the police department's assigned donation revenue account line, and they spend it out of the assigned donation expenditure account line. It does not get lost in, with the General Fund unassigned fund balance. It is segregated for all of eternity until it is spent. And in 2021, ah, 2021, we have $10,000 in donations for the disposition of the cog cars. They have to be moved, and this $10,000 was donated for that purpose. But there's also an additional $95,000 in the Capital Improvements Fund for furtherance of whatever it is we're going to do with the cog cars. I know there's a lot of talk about our project. I personally would think it would be nice to have a little coffee shop in one, but that's just me and coffee. Okay. Next. This is a little off now, because I'm always tweaking things. And this morning, I emailed out new summaries of the General Fund and the General Fund, General All Fund summary. And we are now actually up. What I've got now for our revenues and expenditures is slightly different. I'm not going to go reeling off these long numbers for you, but I will say that the forecasted ending 2020 unassigned fund balance is now $3,480,685, which is a little over $28,000 more than what you see on the screen here. Now, this is not going to be the end at this point. There are still changes that are going to occur. So don't memorize this number. Just know that right now, we are in very good shape, and I think we're going to continue to be in good shape. Okay, we're done with the General Fund. We're on the downhill slide. I hope everybody's hanging in there with me. Okay. In addition to the General Fund, we have what are called governmental funds, and I'm going to cover those. And those are funds that have a dedicated revenue stream. When they have a dedicated revenue stream, and it's usually a tax, then we can separate it out from the General Fund. And the other thing we have is enterprise funds, and those operate like businesses, because in those, citizens get something for what they're paying for. They're paying a fee for water, they get water, unlike a tax where it's not directly tied. They pay taxes, they get governmental services, but it's not exactly tied exactly to the tax. So I'm going to just do a really quick overview of these other governmental funds. And the first one is the Transportation Fund. It is funded by the Single Holler Fee of $48,000 that is given by our residential waste holler for the privilege of being the only waste holler in the city of Manitou Springs. And at the time this was decided to do this program, which was to cut down on noise and also all, multiple waste trash companies running their trucks through our roads, which are very difficult, I mean, they're very hard on the roads. It was decided that that fee would be dedicated to transportation-type needs, like street overlays and parking lot improvements. And in this case, $54,000 is going to be spent in 2021, because we built up the fund balance in there a bit, so we can spend more than the $48,000 and spin that fund balance down a bit. And it's going to be spent on street overlays in 2021. Next after that is the Open Space Fund, and that was established by ballot question and has not only a portion of a mil levy, but also has a percentage of sales tax, and it is dedicated to open space. It falls under the purview of the Open Space Advisory Committee, which advises city council about how these, how these funds should be spent for the coming year. And we have budgeted in there at the current moment, $277,706. After that, we have the Law Enforcement Fund. This is a special fee, I believe it's $45, applied to all court cases, and it's for the capital needs of the police department. It was originally established for building the jail cell that was in the police department, and that's long been taken care of, and it's been used for a variety of things since then, including one year paying for a police car, police vehicle. This year, it's planned to spend $16,000 on evidence room improvements, which won't be all of the improvements. We're going to space out all the things that need to be done over several years, because otherwise it would overwhelm the fund. And you can't overspend the fund balance. Once you get past zero, the General Fund has to come in and save the day. So after that, we've got the Conservation Trust Fund. And this is funded by lottery funds from the state, and these monies are dedicated to parks and recreation purposes. And it falls under the purview of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, also known as PARAB. And the expenditures budgeted for 2021 are $154,000. And we continue on. This is the Pike's Peak Rule Transportation Authority Fund, and it was established by ballot where 1% of sales tax, which is equivalent to one penny per dollar, is put aside for PPRTA funding. It goes to the PPRTA authority, and they disperse the funds to all the participants, the entities, municipalities, within the authority. And 35% of this is for maintenance, and 55%, 55% of this is for capital improvements. Now, it's not just any capital improvements. It's for specific projects that were established by the ballot question in 2012. It's for specific projects that were established by the ballot question in 2012, and those projects have already been addressed by our fellow leaders here. Then we have the El Paso Boulevard Becker's Lane Fund, and it was established originally to create the skateboard park. It originally had one mill for maintenance and two mills to pay off the bonds that were used to fund the capital needs of that park. After the bonds were paid off, the two mills went away, but we had some leftover funding in there from that. And that was, went as a ballot question to the citizens, asking if we could use the remaining $300,000 that was left on other capital needs of other parks, and they agreed, and that's how it's being spent. And I think it's been spent down about halfway now. So the one mill is for maintenance, and most of that goes to pay for a park employee, and then the rest goes for maintenance needs of that park. So we have $94,305 budgeted there. That includes capital and the maintenance. And the capital that is being spent in 2021 is for the city's match towards the Soda Springs Phase 1 construction. There's also some funding coming from the conservation trust fund for that. But in other words, the funding for the Soda Springs construction Phase 1, none of it is hitting the general fund. The city's match is coming from El Paso Becker's Fund and from the conservation trust fund. And then we, of course, got that nice grant from GOCO. And then we have the downtown public facilities fund. This was originally established to pay off the bonds that funded the downtown improvements. And the bonds, we managed to pay them off early because our sales tax and use tax, there was a use tax percentage also, came in higher and faster than what we thought, so we paid it down off early, and once that was paid off, we discontinued that sales tax and use tax. And the remaining funds, there was about $182,000 left after that was paid off, went to a ballot question before the citizens, saying, can this money be used for, towards capital improvements and maintenance of the downtown area, which is actually pretty smart? You know, you use all this money to make it look nice, and then it's nice to have some money left over towards maintaining it. So Jeff is going to, oh, our public works director, is going to be using $20,000 of that towards ADA improvements in 2021. Now we come to our newest fund, the Manitou Arts Culture and Heritage Fund, also known as the MATCH Fund. So when we talk about the MATCH Fund, just know that means Manitou Arts Culture and Heritage. That was established by ballot question in November of 2019, which approved taking, making a 3% sales tax and 3% use tax, tax to be put into this special fund, to be split, 66% going towards the Manitou Arts Center, the Manitou Springs Heritage Center, the Miramont Castle, and two city facilities, the Carnegie Building and Hiawatha Gardens. I personally call them the five. That's what I have it in the fund. This is the funding for the five. Now, it's not meant to be, you know, split up evenly or, I mean, that's, there's a match board established. They're going to decide who gets what every year. Well, I shouldn't say, they're going to advise. City council has ultimate control over how this is done, but they've created a match board to help lead to those decisions. Now, you're wondering, where does the other 34% go? Actually, you're not because you know, but perhaps our audience is. The other 34% is to be distributed in the form of awards and grants to foster the arts culture and heritage within the city of Manitou Springs. This tax was collected starting in July this year. It is estimated that it will bring in $126,000 in 2020, which will then be turned around and spent in 2021. Now, of this, 700 went to staff support in 2020, but the remaining 125,300 will be distributed next year. $82,698 will go to the five. And then the other $42,602 will go into the grants program, which I've already described. And now, we are down to the last fund, the last governmental fund. And this is the big kahuna. It's the Capital Improvements Fund. It has a little over half of a mill, and if you remember, I've already said, a mill is $70,000. So it's got about $39,000 going towards funding all of our capital improvements needs, which in the big scheme of things, is a drop in the bucket. So the city manages by going for grants, and we've been extraordinarily successful for going for grants. I think Manitou Springs is known for being able to get grants, and it's a good thing because then all we have to do is pay for the grant match. So we're leveraging our dollars very well. And this year, we're going to be transferring over $500,000 from the general fund for the capital improvements. Most of that is going for grant matches, and then there's about $406,000 that'll be going towards our debt service payments. And those, it's not considered true debt because they're lease purchases, which means every year, city council re-appropriates the money for these debt service payments. If you didn't do that, we would then have to turn around and hand the equipment over, and no one wants that, not even the lenders, especially not the lenders. So we're transferring over $500,000, and we also have some remaining East End sales tax. And when we say East End sales tax, we're referring to money that normally would have been distributed to the URA for their sales tax TIF. And in 2018, the URA and the city came to an agreement that the city would retain that sales tax TIF through June of 2019. And this turned out to be quite a bit of money, and city council at the time said, let's dedicate this money to being spent on, let's commit this funding, remember? Let's commit this funding to infrastructure and capital improvement needs. And so we did that, and we're still spending it. But by the end of 2021, there'll only be about $36,000 left of that. So we're coming to the end of that particular funding source, and it's been really beneficial to the city to have this. So in 2021, we're going to be spending the $977,790 of that, which will leave, like I said, about $36,000. And the main fund balance, which is just the normal capital improvement fund balance, we're spending about $475,174 on capital improvements. And then we're spending that, I already mentioned, the $406,000 towards the debt service payments. And that gets us to the end of the governmental funds, and I hope you enjoyed the ride with me. And now, I'm going to turn this over to the man with the plan, our public works director. Give it up for Jeff Jones.
Thank you, Becca. All right, so I do have good news and I have bad news. Good news is we have seven slides left. Bad news is there is no bad news with seven slides left, so we're all good to go. All right, so let's go ahead and go into the Water Enterprise Fund here real quick. The Water Enterprise Fund is for the city reservoir, obviously, freshwater treatment plant, as well as for the distribution system, the distribution grid, including fire hydrants, pressure-reducing valves, serving approximately, it says 2,200 customers, that's more like 2,200 homes, over 5,000 customers, and over 40,000 feet of water lines, and also the mineral springs maintenance, and also with USGS contracts for that. The budget for that is $2184,000. Going to some of the Water Enterprise Funds proposed, we would like to complete. Crystal Hills Water Tank Improvement, we have $100,000, that's for valving, pumps, and piping. But what I would like to add upfront on that is we had a recent inspection with our 2 million gallon water tank on the Mesa, the Mesa Water Tank, and it was due a five-year dive inspection, which they did complete. Report come back, there's some rusting and some pitting and some support bracing that needs to be looked into, and we may possibly adjust those funds to that water tank, possibly. Okay? More to come on that. There is a full report that I loaded up on Monday.com, and our water superintendent is fully aware of it, and he is going to take that on full force. Emergency repair, main repairs, $75,000, we've set aside for that. We certainly will spend that, as well as water distribution system main replacements. As I mentioned earlier, we want to do some replacements, at least three, I believe I said, on some of those and get those up to speed. Willa Lane Water and Sewer Main Replacement, we put out Earmark 37-500 for design of the water line, so we can further the longevity of that service as well. Water Enterprise Fund, we've put in for a VAC trailer, excuse me, and the reason we put in for that VAC trailer, it's a smaller trailer mounted with compressor, water tank, jetting capabilities because of our small, narrow roads that we have. It is very difficult to get that jet truck up and get it to the customer. Also, a small Ford Ranger crew cab, four by four, needed to drive through the small-town streets. Okay, on to our Sewer Enterprise Fund. The Sewer Fund provides for a distribution system, the distribution system, a distribution grid serving approximately 2,200 homes, well over 400,000 feet of sewer lines, and payment to our Colorado Springs Utility for treatment of our wastewater, which is budgeted at $550,000, and all of our wastewater goes to Colorado Springs if they treat in their treatment facility. Budget for that is down from 2020. For 2021, it's proposed at $1,246,351. Some things we want to accomplish with our Sewer Enterprise Fund is emergency water main repairs and blockages. We see that all the time. We'll definitely be using that money for that. Manhole repair, in-house or contractor, we're going to try to do as many in-house as possible. Some of the manholes over the years have sunk down, so we want to try to get them back up to street level. There's not a thump-thump every time you drive over them, it's smoother, so we'll be doing that. Some slip line and point repair contracting, slip line, what that is, is if you have a pipe that has some damage to it, an old clay pipe, you can shoot a slip line coating down it, and it coats it, and it's very much cheaper than replacing the whole thing. But you run into challenges with that when you have the geographic we have there, there in Manitou Springs, but we use as much as possible. Slip line, or excuse me, Willa Lane Water and Sewer Repair Replacement, that's for design, also the 37-50 for that, and we're going to get that going. Okay, so that brings us into storm drainage, and we'll storm drainage. The Storm Drain Fund provides for all contract, construction, and maintenance activities related to the inlets, storm drain pipes, channels, bridges, culverts, open conveyances such as Ruxton and Fountain Creek. And the fund personnel also responsible for ensuring compliance of the city's MS4 permit. So just for everyone's knowledge, the MS4 permit, it is a permit that authorizes cities, counties, and other government entities to discharge stormwater collected by their stormwater systems to waters of the United States. The MS4 permitting is necessary as a matter of federal law, and stormwater must be collected or channeled into a storm conveyance, drainage ditch, creek, or other similar conveyances, and discharged from a discreet point of source. Very important as well, especially given the mountainous area that we live in. The budget for that is down a little bit, at $373,000. We've streamlined some things and made our efforts smarter in order to get there. Okay. Some storm drainage projects that we have looked at that we want to do. The Pinion Lane Storm Drain on the east side, what we'd like to do there, we've got $20,000, that's replace some coupling, it's a piping. That way, we get a good flow of water down there, which better mitigates the stormwater. Washington and Lover's Lane, the slope drain, what we actually want to do there is improve the slope and the direction of the drain on that one, so it doesn't get stopped up continuously as well, and get some water down into the creek where it needs to go. Almonte Storm Drain, Fountain Place, Manitou Avenue, that's $25,000 for that one, it's partial replacement of the storm box, as well as the grates there, to get that up to speed as well. And then we have requested a Ford Ranger Crew Cab to help replace part of the aging fleet for the stormwater enterprise folks. With that, I believe we have come to the end of the presentation, and I'll turn it over to Denise.
I just want to mention with the enterprise, it is different than the general fund. We have done rate case, so we got a, last year, the city council approved a five-year rate case, so that is tied in to the capital projects. So if there's a big change to that, we would have to go back and revisit the rate case and have that reevaluated. So I just want to mention that on the enterprise. There's a couple of other things I wanted to mention about the budget, is we just learned that our grant administrator, we thought was going to be covered by a DOLA, it will not be covered next year, and we learned that this last week. So as staff, we're looking at that. We have about five more FEMA grants that have to be closed out, and that takes a tremendous amount of time and expertise, and you want to make sure that that's done correctly, or if you're audited, it will, it would take even more time, and we'd have to bring somebody in. So we are looking at that internally, but it may change a few things, and I just want to share that upfront, that we may have to come back and see if we could ask for some funding for that position at this point, just because the FEMA is not, the FEMA grants are not complete. I think you can see that by today, every department touches every department, and the staff has done a phenomenal job. A lot of time and hours have been put towards this. You can tell that each one of them are extremely proud of their staff and what they do, and you can feel it in their hearts and their souls as they present, and it really speaks, I think, volumes about the leadership and the staff that the city of Manitou has. So with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor, and thank you for your time, thank you for your leadership. I know this is a huge commitment on your parts, and I just want to say thank you for that. I also want to thank all the directors. This is a Saturday that they have given up after probably putting in a 50-hour week already, and they've been here and committed for the entire day, so I really want to recognize them for their leadership and all that they've done. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Great.
Can I ask? And the other thing is, is I think, you know, the one thing that, as I mentioned, Becca and I are willing to sit down and talk to anybody and spend one-on-one time, which is probably the best way to really address a lot of questions, is really sit down and do one-on-one and say, what about this, what about that, and explain that before we go into a general meeting, so that it allows, because budgeting, and especially city budgeting, is very complex, and there's a lot of rules and regulations and a lot of things that go with each fund. So, Mayor, I'll go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Denise, and thank you, department heads. I'm really impressed. I think you've done a great job. This is, I think, the happiest city council meeting I've probably ever attended in any capacity. Looking forward, it's, I'm pleased, I realize we have a lot on our plates. There are some pretty ambitious plans here, but we need to do this. We're playing catch-up with many things, and we, I think we want to play to a high bar. We're trying to provide a high degree of service and transparency to the community, and that's not only today, but it's well into the future. So thank you very much for the work you've done. Frankly, I'm proud of you. I just want to say that, and please extend that back to your staff. I think the culture that you're building in the community and the city is, it's not easy, it is time-consuming, but you obviously take a great deal of heart to it and a lot of personal satisfaction, so I hope that culture continues to build. of personal satisfaction, so I hope that culture continues to build and that you can derive a lot of good satisfactions and memories out of it. Certainly, this is, I think it's a pleasing moment in general for all of us. That said, there will be some follow-on questions, certainly. I know in previewing the books I had, the budget book, I had two or three pages of questions, I think, a number of those have been cleared up today with the presentation here. So I'm kind of inclined to think that maybe council members should submit our questions and do one-on-ones with Denise and Becca. I don't, if there is interest in entertaining some questions now, I guess we could do that, I'll poll council to see what our thoughts are. So really, do we want to ask some questions now? We budgeted time until 4 o'clock, we could end earlier, we could, we could use it for questions now, we could submit questions. Susan, what are your thoughts?
Thanks, Mayor. I think for the most part, the questions that I have, I can direct directly to staff via Denise. I do want to echo your comments. I think this has been an amazing budget book and an amazing presentation, and the camaraderie that I've seen you guys display today is unprecedented in my time on city council and almost, I think, maybe in my time here in Manitou. I like the mission statements, and I think maybe we ought to show those more often, because everybody started their department presentation with that, and sometimes I think we spend a lot of time creating those, and then we don't go back and really read them and live up to them. So that's one thing that really stood out to me today. Other than that, thank you all for the excellent information for us to consider as we go into the remainder of the budget meetings. I think that in my time spent with other communities through CML district meetings, we're unique, we're in a unique position, not just as a state of Colorado, but the Manitou budget that you see here in the proposed budget with our reserve balance is not what every community is experiencing. I feel like you guys have done an amazing job. You could have just threw your hands up in the air and said, can't do it, you didn't, you doubled down, and you really gave us a really great reserve fund potentially to work with. We don't know what's going to happen in 2021. Now, I think we can say that for almost any year going forward after COVID, but truly, we don't know, we're not out of the woods yet with COVID, and I feel like we're in a really good position to keep our citizens safe, no matter what we need to do, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think I'm going to be a little bit repetitive, but I think it's really kind of
Mayor, you need to sit down here. Is it green?
Green. Is that better? Can you hear me now?
That's better. Bring it closer, maybe.
Huh. It's never mental. I'm going to be a little bit repetitive, but I think it shows the importance of some of the things that a couple of other folks have said. One is that I too had, you know, pages of questions that I had, and you guys have managed to answer a whole lot of my questions today, which I think is a tribute to how you put this briefing together, which is great. That being said, of course, the briefing generated pages of questions, but they're really, it's just very interesting, and I will take advantage of one-on-one time to just go through them all, because it wouldn't make sense to do that today. Secondly, I think when, oops, sorry. A couple of things that I know Susan can probably relate to this, is that when, a year ago, we were looking at customer service and teamwork as two priorities within the city, and it's really clear today that both of those things have been emphasized and acted on, and I find that very exciting. I mean, you can really see and feel that change within the city, which is nice. It's also great to see all the work at one time. I know how difficult these briefings are for you guys to put together, as well as for us to absorb it all, because it's a tremendous amount of information, but it's so important because it gives the context of everything that we have to vote on up here. And, you know, so often, we find ourselves voting an issue in isolation of other things that are happening within the city. So to see all of this at one time, and the tremendous breadth and depth of work that you guys are doing out there is really, really impressive, and it's really important for us to know about it. So I, and I, lastly, in the three years, four years, whatever, that I've been coming to budget briefings, hands down, this has been the best one, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to echo the comments of the previous council members. This is my first budget meeting, and I'm very impressed. I have some comments and perhaps some questions. One comment I had for the chief of the police department, UTVs versus patrol cars, I know you're a fan of UTVs, and you mentioned in the budget, you're budgeting for two new patrol cars, and, you know, every time I drive by City Hall, I see lots of patrol cars out there, and I just thought you might want to orient more towards UTVs, you know, to get more interaction with the population and so on. I know we're coming up on the winter, and of course, you want to have some protection from the winter, but especially during the six months of our summer, more or less, UTVs, I think, is more effective. Question I had for Chief Forsette, Fire Department, I was a little bit confused in your presentation on where our jurisdiction starts and where El Paso Search and County Rescue starts on the incline and the Bar Trail and so on. And I know that we have an expense that we end up incurring every year for the rescue from the incline, I wondered if you could speak to that a little bit.
We have an expense?
Yeah, I think we, it's quantified somewhere around $60,000 a year that we end up incurring for rescues off the incline, that's what I've heard.
It's not that much.
Okay.
And actually, it's gone way down under our current COVID circumstances and the new scheduling for hikers to use the trail. So when we talk about the jurisdiction of the incline, I go back and I speak to, you have to understand there's a difference between ownership and jurisdiction, okay? Jurisdictionally, approximately halfway up the incline, you'll find is the city limits of Manitou Springs. We're solely responsible for that, plain and simple, it's within our jurisdiction. Colorado Springs owns that property. It's actually two parcels of land that make up the bottom portion of that, that's within the city limits of Manitou Springs, but we are responsible jurisdictionally to respond to emergency incidents in that area. Then, the next part of that, from halfway up to, like I say, about the false summit of the incline, is unincorporated El Paso County. And then, from there on up, it's United States Forest, the United States Government Forest Service. Those are all readily available to you on the county assessor site, you just pull up the map, and you can see who the tax entity is, right? You can also see who the ownership is, and then taxes based upon that. So that gives you an idea of jurisdiction. As far as whose responsibility for it, I kind of explained that, but what we have is an agreement with El Paso County Search and Rescue for our efforts. We've worked together for a long time in those efforts to mitigate those situations that we have in our partnership, as far as what those efforts look like. Like I say, our efforts are to, most expediently as we can, get to patients on that hill, whether they be medical or traumatic events, and care for those patients, and ensure that we stop the process of what's harming them, or the environment at that point. Then El Paso County comes in, Search and Rescue, and they extricate the patient from that environment. It works all the way up that hillside, all the way up to the top. Our agreement is that both of us, we have response plans that are in our dispatch protocols, and those response plans are automatic. So anything from the very bottom of the incline to the top of the incline, and the first three miles of Bar Trail, are both agencies. We both respond together, and there's a lot that goes into that relationship then when the efforts begin, but that agreement is we both go, there's no questions asked.
Okay, yeah, that answered my question, because I was wondering, because I live at the very end of Ruxton, and I see the vehicles come up, you know, to rescue and so on, and I see both our fire department, as well as El Paso Search and County.
A fantastic partnership. Been doing it for years, and we're very protective of it, actually, on both sides.
Very good, thank you. And let's see, I had a comment, I guess, for Roy Chaney. I'm impressed at your, on your fifth book, reading on parking studies, and I like the idea of the real-time communication system, because we need to figure out a way to communicate that there's no parking on Ruxton Avenue, there's no reason for people to drive up Ruxton Avenue unless they perhaps have a reservation. I'd like to see, you mentioned the reservation system for Bar Trail Parking Lot, I'd like to see something like that, so that the only reason to drive up Ruxton Avenue is if you're going to go park at the Bar Trail Parking Lot and go hiking on the Bar Trail. And I've noticed that just about every day, I go down and talk to the people at the base of the incline, the Colorado Springs Parks and Rec people that are managing the reservation system, and I think they're doing a very good job of noticing when people are coming over towards that incline from the Bar Trail Parking Lot, and they're saying, did you park at the Bar Trail Parking Lot? Well, I'm sorry, but you can't go up the incline. And they're enforcing that, and I commend them on that, because my vision would be to get more cars off of Ruxton Avenue, because it's a dead-end road, there's nowhere for people to go, and what happens is people drive up there, they're looking for a parking place, they don't know what's going on, they don't understand what's up there. So the more we can communicate what's up there, whether with signs down at the turnaround down there at Manitou Avenue and Ruxton Avenue, to let people know, and that's what that real-time communication system comes in and helps out with that. And I guess I had a question, and perhaps I could answer this on the one-on-one about exactly what's entailed with the Ruxton corridor, and I can take that up with Denise and ask her about that separately. Other than that, that's all the questions I've got. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. I guess now, we'd like to go to our remote counselors, and I'll start them alphabetically. So Judith Chandler, do you have comments or questions?
I do, I have a, can you hear me? It's reverberating.
Yeah, we can hear you, you're a little faint.
Okay. I'll try to speak up. So first of all, I have a few questions, but nothing that can't be emailed. I know it's been a long day for everyone, but just to get on the cheerleading bandwagon, I, words cannot express how phenomenally impressed I am. I mean, as a freshman councilwoman, I learned so much today. Today was invaluable to me, and I am just so impressed with the hard work, camaraderie, teamwork, and, you know, pandemic notwithstanding. So I just wanted to tell you, thank you for spending your Saturday with me, and a lot of my questions were answered, I just have a few, and I'll get those to you next week. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilor Chandler. Next, Councilor Shada?
Yes, sir. I want to hand a great thank you to all the city staff for putting this together. This is my ninth budget book. Believe it or not, I have the other eight that I looked at, and it's pretty amazing to see how well we've done over the years, and I am stunned at just the enthusiasm and the professionalism of all the presentations, and I'll have a series of questions and take Denise's invitation up to email them to her or ask her one-on-one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shada. And now, Councilor Wolf. Okay, hang on, well, hang on.
Can I say something else?
Yes, in the meantime.
Has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system. Seven.
Come here, Protam.
Okay, I just wanted to say one more thing while we're waiting, and that is that it's very clear, and I think it's important for us to understand that the staff is the continuity, and that was really apparent today, that those of us sitting up here are for, you know, two, four, maybe eight years, I think Council Shada just alluded to it as well. But one of the things that's very gratifying to me, and I'm sure Susan recognized it as well, is that many of the projects that we started, you know, a year or two ago, are coming to fruition or still being heavily worked on, and that is so gratifying to me, and I'm just excited when you guys get to see that as well. But I, you know, what really hit me hard today is that the staff is the continuity for our government and our city, and we're just temporary up here, so just something to think about, I'm waxing philosophic, but.
Thank you. Okay, we have Councilor Wolf back. Councilor Wolf, do you have questions or comments?
Oh, thank you, and sorry about that. I meant to hit my unmute button, and I actually hung myself up from the call, but that was just a moment ago. I just want to reiterate, I agree with what's been said already, I'm very impressed with how the clarity of the book and how much information is available to us in there, as well as the presentations today, and it's really nice to see people who are enthusiastic. I'll send my questions along, just as a general, like for the future overall suggestion, at least for people like myself with minimal budget and analysis experience, is perhaps to have some kind of a key at the beginning of your budget book next time, explaining what is the difference between, for example, 2020 annual budget, 2020 mid-year budget, 2020 real budget, some of the distinctions between these categories were not, and still aren't, clear to me. So, but I just think it's been very helpful and really impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Wolf. And now, I would like to give the city administration an opportunity to make comments if desired. Denise, we'll start with you.
Thanks, I wasn't expecting that. I think I've said most of my comments, but again, I want to thank you for your leadership, and I, the one person we haven't mentioned is Nicole, she's been sitting here all day too and has done a phenomenal job, so I want to thank Nicole. But it's really, as you mentioned, and I think it's imperative, is this group is truly amazing. We may not always agree, we may disagree, but we always have honor and respect, and this leadership group pushes each other, they help us, we all get better because of each other, and they support their staff, and I think you saw that today more and more of how proud they are of their staff and what they do. We are fortunate to serve the residents of Manitou, and I will say, the residents of Manitou are fortunate to have this leadership team. Thank you.
Well said. Becca, you've been sitting there quiet all day long, would you like to have an opportunity to comment?
I was on mute. Can everyone hear me? I just have to say that this whole process for the budget retreat has metamorphosized into a really useful tool to present the budget to city council, to, and give them the whole picture. Back when I first started this process, it was, I would say, it was kind of on the primitive side, and now we've gotten much more sophisticated, and it's just a thousand times better than what we started out with multiple years ago. And I'm glad it's done.
Really?
Well, today is done, today is done.
It's never completely done, is it? Great, thank you, Becca. It's, it's never completely done, is it? Great. Thank you, Becca. Mr. Chaney?
First, I think I can answer those questions. Mr. Bremner, we are still waiting for Park and Logic signs, so we will have a sign at the bottom of Ruxton that will say that Ruxton is full, or what's the occupancy. That'll also be transmitted to Park Mobile and the website, and hopefully, we can deter those drivers from going up Ruxton. So we are working on that. Secondary is, we have been in discussions about the reservations at Bar. Staff believes we should go that route, so we are working in that direction to see if we can get that going in some way in the future. We do have the capabilities of doing that, and think it can be a valuable tool to, again, prevent the cars just from going up there looking for parking. And, and once we get that information out, they will, you know, look at that first, and then, and go to other parking locations that won't be up Ruxton. So I think those were the two big questions you had with that. I just want to echo what Denise said. And, you know, I've been here 15 years, and this is a, the best I've seen a group of people work together. I think it starts with the leadership. So I appreciate council and Denise in that. But, you know, we, we butt heads a lot, and we fight for what we believe. And then, when we leave that office, we work together. And so it's, it's a neat thing to see. So we appreciate the support, and thanks for listening today. And now, we have a lot of work to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Roy. Before we adjourn, I guess I'd like to give the department heads in the audience an opportunity to comment if you have anything you'd like to say at this point, or questions you'd like to ask us.
Councilmember, my first name?
Good. Anything else? Well, I don't see that there would be any objections if we were to adjourn, and this is a work session, so we'll adjourn. Thank you.